We sure have a full house today, which is good. I want to welcome everybody. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation given by Pastor Terry Wright with Grace Fellowship Church and the pledge led by Commissioner Turner. Please stand if you're able.
Well, Father, we thank you for today and for your goodness and your kindness. And, Lord, I want to thank you personally for allowing me the opportunity to live and work in such a great county as Putnam. Lord, I thank you for our county administrator. Father bless him, bless his family, bless his team, his staff that he's assembled. Lord bless each and every commissioner and their family. Father, continue to use them to do great things, Lord, for our county. Father, be with our sheriff, our law enforcement officers, protect them, give them grace. And now, Father, as we go into a time of deliberation and business, help us to act principally, help us to act with vision, help us to act with courage and with boldness to do what's best in your sight and for our citizens. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Terry, and thank you, Commissioner Turner. Commissioners, our first item of business is approval of amendments of the June 3, 2019, special workshop, June 4, special budget workshop, and September 17, 2000 Board of County Commissioners regular workshop.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
And I'll second. Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Item two passes. Okay, as Commissioner Harvey would say, now it's for having some fun. It's always great to be able to recognize individuals from whatever part of the county employment. This will be from the sheriff's office with their efforts above the line of duty. So I'd like to call Sheriff Gator Deloche up for some presentations.
Good morning. We actually have four presentations to do this morning, but before we begin, I just want to say that it's a pleasure to be here with each of you today. And since I took office, we made it a point that any time we had a member that went above and beyond to bring them before the county commission so that we could publicly recognize them, and it's my pleasure to do that here today. You know, we've often heard it said that our lives are represented by two dates and a dash. And I think it goes without saying, and you'll hear in just a few moments, that each of these individuals we're recognizing here today, their dashes have gotten significantly larger. So with that, I'd like to welcome the representatives of the Sons of the American Revolution up to the podium with me.
Good morning, everybody. I'm, okay, yes, all right, thank you very much. Good morning, and my name is Jerry Hanchin. I'm the president of the Sons of the American Revolution here for St. John's and Putnam County, and accompanying me with is a compatriot Vernon Myers. And we're here this morning to recognize one of your, we're here to present the Law Enforcement Commendation Medal, which was, this medal was first presented to J. Edgar Hoover, Director of the FBI, in 1968. And the Commendation Medal is presented to a deserving recipient whose display outstanding performance in law enforcement agencies, and their performance achievement has clearly set them above their peers. Would Detective Casey Reynolds please come forward? And I'll just go ahead and, but Detective Reynolds spearheaded a lengthy investigation involving a group of suspects that put skimmer devices on several bank ATMs across northeast Florida and southeast Georgia. These perpetrators cost individuals and banks thousands of dollars in lost revenue. It was her work that helped to identify the subject, which ultimately led to their arrest. And we're here to, should be a hero medal, because if you was one of the recipients of one of these people that are scamming us today, I'm sure you would agree that she deserves a hero's medal. And we're here, this is the Law Enforcement Commendation.
There's your medal.
And this medal, each person that is given this medal is entered into the archives of the National Society of the Sons of the American Revolution in Kentucky. Thank you very much for. Thank you. [applause]
Hang on, one second. Okay.
Oh, now I get the picture. [inaudible]
It's all right. You want to get up front then.
Come on, Russ, come on.
All right, and one, two, three.
And I hope all the people that come here want your picture taken with them.
Skeeter ball, fella.
Not to belabor the issue, but for those of you who were not here whenever we originally did the press release for this particular case, many of you who are seated behind the dais will remember, this was actually a case that originated in Jacksonville and proliferated into Clay County and eventually into Putnam. And had it not been for Casey's dogged efforts, we would not have gotten cooperation from some of our agencies that assisted us with that investigation. Ultimately, it led to the inclusion of some certain government organizations that have three-letter acronyms, which will remain unnamed, that were initially unwilling to cooperate with Casey and her endeavors. But again, had it not been for her efforts, this case would have never been brought to resolution. So let's give her another big round. [applause] Next up is Corrections Deputy Brian Smith. Brian, if you'll come down and join me at the podium, please, as Colonel Wells reads the commendation.
It's oftentimes that our corrections deputies don't receive the recognition that they deserve, because most of their work is done behind the scenes and outside of the public's view. We are very proud to have an extremely dedicated team of deputy sheriffs that work inside of our correctional facility and under often hard circumstances. While the inmates inside our facility have often made poor decisions and chosen paths in their lives that have led them to the county jail, nonetheless, they are citizens of our county, they are someone's son, child, mother, daughter, and their care is extremely important to us. In September of 2019, Corrections Deputy Brian Smith went above and beyond in the care of one of our inmates under demanding circumstances. This is when Deputy Smith noticed that an inmate had tied a drawstring from her pants around her neck. The inmate then applied body weight to the string in an attempt to hang herself. This resulted in pressure around the neck, which stopped her breathing. Deputy Smith immediately noticed what was going on, called for assistance, entered the cell, and saved the life of the inmate. Deputy Smith grabbed the string, pulled it away from her neck, and held the deputy's legs long, sorry, and held the inmate's legs long enough to remove the pressure from the neck. Deputy Smith was able to reestablish an airway in the inmate. The inmate then began breathing again. Other deputies responded to assist. Deputy Smith's quick actions, great thinking, and immediate lifesaving efforts nonetheless saved the life of the inmate, and for that, Deputy Brian Smith is awarded the lifesaving medal.
And next, I'd like to invite Lieutenant Elton Miller to join me at the podium for presentation of the lifesaving medal.
Lieutenant Elton Miller is the Deputy District Commander of our West District. While on duty in August of this year, Deputy Miller responded to a call on Dawn Avenue in Interlochen in reference to a 39-year-old male, again, attempting suicide by hanging. Upon Deputy Miller's arrival, the male subject had tied an electrical cord around his neck. It was standing upon a chain-linked fence. Deputy Miller was able to immediately recognize the subject was in distress and attempting suicide. With the assistance of a bystander under the direction of Lieutenant Miller, they were able to grab the subject's legs, relieve the pressure from his neck, and remove the cord. There is no doubt that Lieutenant Miller's quick actions commanded the scene in excellence saved the life of a Putnam County resident, and he is hereby awarded the lifesaving medal.
Brian, would you join us back at the podium, please? Commissioners, I'd like to invite all of you down to the front of the dais to grab a quick photo with these two. And last but not least, I'd like to invite Suzanne Blackwolder, one of our correction support personnel staff members, to the podium with me for receipt of the Sheriff's Achievement Award.
And speaking of often unrecognized individuals with the sheriff's office, we have an extraordinary team of civilian personnel that perform multiple tasks without which we wouldn't be able to operate on a daily basis. Suzanne is a correction service specialist, and one of her responsibilities is scanning any materials that are left at the jail intended to go to an inmate. Certain materials inmates are allowed to receive, and one of those materials they are allowed to receive are family bibles. A few months ago, Suzanne was scanning those materials before they were allowed to go into the jail, and when scanning one of the bibles, she determined that the Bible contained a dollar bill, and inside that dollar bill was hidden five bags of methamphetamines intended for an inmate. Because of Suzanne's attention to detail, this book was not allowed entry into the inmate housing area, and two felony arrests were eventually made. Suzanne has a tremendous work ethic and fills multiple roles within our corrections division, some of which include filling in at the visitation center. Suzanne regularly comes in early, works through lunch, and works late to ensure that her job is completed, as evidenced with her interception of dangerous drugs intended for the inmate housing area. Suzanne is considered a valued member of the correction staff, and we feel privileged to have her serving alongside us. As a result, Suzanne is awarded the Sheriff's Commendation Medal.
So I think it goes without saying, the moral of the last story is, thou shalt not sneak meth into our county jail in a Bible. Thank you all. It was my pleasure to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff Deloche. Just give him one more hand. If everybody's going to exit, I was going to take a couple-minute break. That's going to happen. Yeah, we're going to take a two-minute recess. Steve Crowley will come forward, Lulagale Parish, Karen Lee, Bob Lee, and come to the podium, and I will read the proclamation.
Putnam County Proclamation, number 2019-89, One Book, One Putnam, 2020 Putnam County Read, Where the Crawdads Sing by Delia Owens. Whereas reading is an important activity for all the residents of Putnam County, and whereas less than half of the adult population of Putnam County now reads literature, the Board of Commissioners wishes to encourage all the county's residents, both young and old, to read. And whereas reading is one way to create bonds within family and among friends, neighbors, we want to get everyone in the community, from high school, youth, office workers, to public officials, and senior citizens, to read and discuss a book together. And whereas One Book, One Putnam is encouraging all residents to read Delia Owens' book, Where the Crawdads Sing, a coming-of-age story set in a small coastal town in North Carolina. And whereas the program aims to revive literary reading in Putnam County, therefore, in support of this goal, there will be book discussions, community activities, and knowledgeable speakers. And whereas the Board of Commissioners knows the residents of Putnam County will benefit and learn from reading this book, and whereas One Book, One Putnam is celebrating 15 years of encouraging reading throughout Putnam County, now therefore be it proclaimed, but the Putnam County Board of Commissioners does hereby support through reading as promoted by One Book, One Putnam, and proclaims January and February 2020 as One Book, One Putnam County Read Months, done, ordered, and adopted this 22nd day of October.
Mr. Chairman, I move this proclamation. Second. Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Thank you, as proclamation is adopted.
This is sort of like déjà vu all over again. It's been many years that I've had the privilege to stand up here and speak to you just a moment about One Book, One Putnam and the value it has for Putnam County and reading. And I can't tell you how many people over the years have been involved with reading thanks to the work that One Book, One Putnam has done, but it's in the thousands now, and that is a good thing, much as I appreciate and love Sheriff Deloche. But reading does work to keep people out of his establishment, so we do all the things that we can. When the crawdads sing is one of those phenomena that has just sort of taken over the country. And when Delia Owens was asked what it was about, she says that it's a mystery, a love story, a courtroom drama, and it's primarily about self-reliance survival and how isolation affects human behavior. It's a story that we can all relate to, and I can tell you, I started listening to it. I didn't read it, I hate to admit, but I was listening to it, and I got engaged with the characters almost immediately, and that carried me through the book. So I encourage you all to read it as well. Reading season starts in January. We'll have a kickoff and a finale and a dance and book discussions, just all sorts of fun stuff for two months, and I urge you to also become involved with it. And always, I have to say, thank you very much to all of you for the support that you have given One Book, One Putnam, and to Stella and the library system for their support, for giving us a home. For some reason, there's just this logical connection between the library system and One Book, One Putnam, and letting us have Jeremy Yates once in a while to do our publicity and support and those kinds of things, because without it, we wouldn't be able to be successful. We are an all-volunteer organization. We receive no direct money from the county or from the county commission, although your checks would be gratefully appreciated. But we appreciate all that you do for us and all that the residents of Putnam County do, and I just encourage you, as I often say, reading rocks, so keep reading, excuse me, and thank you all so very much. Yeah, I do have some of my compatriots with me. Bob Lee is our current chairman of One Book, One Putnam. His fine bride, Karen Lee, who's hiding behind him, Roberta Chrissin, Joyce Oliver, Lulagale Parish, and Stella, and that's Chairman Pickens, and that's exciting, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I enjoyed your other book, by the way.
Oh, and because we are trying to keep, we were trying to keep it somewhat of a secret, we didn't release the books through the library system, but they are available starting today. They are available in print, large print, and audio in all of the locations of the library system, which are in Crescent City, Melrose, Interlochen, Bostwick, and Palatka.
Mr. Chairman. Steve, when you were talking about it, I was thinking a crawfish boil. So are you ready to do that in the month of November, I mean, January?
Sure, sure. We'd love to do that.
We can put it together. We'll do a crawfish boil. How's that?
One of the activities that he didn't mention that we are going to do, too, Sam Parr is going to lead a Moonlight Paddle, and when you read the book, you'll see how that just fits right in.
Good deal. Good deal. That'd be fun. You like crawfish?
Thank you.
Give him another hand.
Hey, Bob, come up for a picture. Stand up here with that bigger broom.
You stay there. Yeah, I'm going to get up here.
Do we need to switch together?
Congratulations.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
Are you all doing, Steve, are you all doing, you can make the bean gardens? Usually a rotary group, you guys have, I think, at nighttime, and we cook for y'all.
Yeah, it's at the golf club.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, at the golf club, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll see you then.
Okay, we'll move down to item V, the Fall County Commission update from the FDOT. We'll ask Mr. Stephen Browning and Mr. Jamie Driggers to come forward, and we welcome you this morning.
So good morning, I'm Stephen Browning, and again, we have Jamie Driggers with us. I kind of want to make you aware of some important dates and also have a few handouts for you. One being the Transportation Alternatives Program, Sun Trail Program, those applications are due December 13, so please submit those if you haven't already. The SCOP, SIGP programs, those applications are due the end of December. Again, call us if you have any questions, email us, I mean, Jamie and myself and Dave's Atlantic, we're here to help you. We'll be glad to assist you in any way possible. The Tentative Work Program, fiscal years '21 through '25, is the first handout in that packet we provided. I kind of want to make you aware of some projects on that list. State Road 100 at East End Road, that's going to let, that's out in San Mateo, improve that intersection to a T-intersection that'll let in fiscal years '21. US 17 from 309 to Wes Aduns Creek Bridge, that'll let in fiscal year '23. And we have the current US 17 project west of Duns Creek, the Horse Landing Road, that's under construction now. And then we have State Road 20, great project from Southwest 56 to Interlochen. That's under construction, and the next piece should start around Christmas to kind of finish that portion from Alachua to Interlochen. And last but not least, Drayton Island Ferry Replacement, we're working on those, and they should let kind of March of 2021, so.
March of 2021?
That's the major updates. Also, kind of the Florida Transportation Plan is being updated. It's just a way to, I guess, give you some insight on kind of, or give you some, a way to get involved in shaping the transportation vision of kind of the goals and objectives as we move forward, so please get involved. It's in that third page or that last page of the handout, so please get involved if you have the opportunity. Jamie also has some updates for you.
Stephen, can I ask you a question before you switch? On the Drayton Island project, I know there's a boat ramp by the ferry. Who would I speak with from DOT to just get some insight on how that's going to, how that's going to take place?
Just give Jamie or myself an email. We can get you the information either way. We'll provide it. I'll write it down, take a note, and we'll give it to you.
And of course, I just want to take the opportunity to build upon Stephen's introduction. Each year, the Department of Transportation introduces its five-year transportation plan for review and public comment. You'll notice on the second page of your handout, one of the things we try to do is go above and beyond to create opportunities to collect those comments. We've actually created a website, d2wpph.com. That's essentially an opportunity to go out and see our plan, review it, and you can also use that as a portal to make comment. With that, if there's no additional questions?
Okay. I'm sure we have some questions. You're not going to ring in. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Jamie and the staff for all the work they do. It's been a pleasure working with DOT. Today at 2:00, we will be talking about one of our local projects and trying to move that over to some critical needs that we have in the county right now. It appears that we are very close to being on go. I've been reading the emails back and forth, and that's that Holloway Road project. It's $4.8 million. It was done by my predecessor, Mr. Taylor, and we could use that money for bridges, and it looks to be very close to that, the two bridges, Barden Bridge and County Road 310. So we'll be talking about that more at 2:00 today, and Mike will be sharing with you the emails and the decisions that have been made and some of the engineering process. So I just wanted to share that with you, that has been in the works. It is up to the board, though, to make that final decision, but that decision needs to be made very soon because those numbers need to be plugged in. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Okay, any other questions at all? Okay, staff? Okay. Okay, Stephen, Jamie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, for all you do.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item four, which is a public hearing, Planning and Development Services, Proposed Ordinance, Amending Ordinance 2018-5, Chapter 8, Article 3 of the Putnam County Code, requiring additional education for certain categories and adding local license categories. So, Mr. John Sioffi?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the ordinance that we revamped to include all contractor licensing back in Putnam County. That was discussed in the workshop.
All right, I'd like to open up the public comment portion for this particular public hearing. Are there any individuals wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, and what's a pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this ordinance.
Second. We've got a proper motion to adopt ordinance 2018-5 by Commissioner Turner and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sioffi. State Road 100 at East End Road, that's going to let, that's out in San Mateo, improve that intersection to a T-intersection that'll let in fiscal years 21. US 17 from 309 to West Aduns Creek Bridge, that'll let in fiscal year 23. And we have the current US 17 project west of Duns Creek, the Horse Landing Road, that's under construction now. And then we have State Road 20, great project from Southwest 56th to Interlochen. That's under construction, and the next piece should start around Christmas to kind of finish that portion from Alachua to Interlochen. And last but not least, Drayton Island Ferry replacement, we're working on those, and they should let kind of March of 2021, so.
March of 2021?
That's the major updates. Also, kind of the Florida Transportation Plan is being updated. It's just a way to, I guess, give you some insight on kind of the, or give you some, a way to get involved in shaping the transportation vision of kind of the goals and objectives as we move forward, so please get involved. It's in that third page or that last page of the handout, so please get involved if you have the opportunity. Jamie also has some updates for you.
Stephen, can I ask you a question before you switch? On the Drayton Island project, I know there's a boat ramp by the ferry. Who would I speak with from DOT to just get some insight on how that's gonna, how that's gonna take place?
Just give Jamie or myself an email, we can, we can get you the information either way, or we can, we'll provide it. I'll write it down, take a note, and we'll give it to you.
And of course, I just want to take the opportunity to build upon Stephen's introduction. Each year, the Department of Transportation introduces its five-year transportation plan for review and public comment. You'll notice on the second page of your handout, one of the things we try to do is go above and beyond to create opportunities to collect those comments. We've actually created a website, d2wpph.com. That's essentially an opportunity to go out and see our plan, review it, and you can also use that as a portal to make comment. With that, if there's no additional questions?
Okay. I'm sure we have some questions. You're not going to ring in. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Jamie and the staff for all the work they do. It's been a pleasure working with DOT. Today at 2:00, we will be talking about one of our local projects and trying to move that over to some critical needs that we have in the county right now. It appears that we are very close to being on go. I've been reading the emails back and forth, and that's that Holloway Road project. It's $4.8 million. It was done by my predecessor, Mr. Taylor, and we could use that money for bridges, and it looks to be very close to that, the two bridges, Barden Bridge and County Road 310. So we'll be talking about that more at 2:00 today, and Mike will be sharing with you the emails and the decisions that have been made and some of the engineering process. So I just wanted to share that with you, that, that has been in the works. It is up to the board, though, to make that final decision, but that decision needs to be made very soon because those numbers need to be plugged in. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Okay. Any other questions at all? Okay, staff? Okay. Okay, Stephen, Jamie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, for all you do.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item four, which is a public hearing, Planning and Development Services, Proposed Ordinance, Amending Ordinance 2018-5, Chapter 8, Article 3 of the Putnam County Code, Requiring Additional Education for Certain Categories and Adding Local License Categories. So, Mr. John Sioffi?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the ordinance that we revamped to include all contractor licensing back in Putnam County. That was discussed in the workshop.
All right, I'd like to open up the public comment portion for this particular public hearing. Are there any individuals wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, and what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, that we adopt this ordinance.
Second?
We've got a proper motion to adopt Ordinance 2018-5 by Commissioner Turner and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose the same sign. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sioffi. Before we move down to public comment, I'd just like to recognize a couple of people in the audience, Mr. Leota Wilkinson, who's State Representative Bobby Payne's executive assistant, and I believe Ms. Dana Jones, President of the Chamber of Commerce, is here. And I, I know that you are in charge of Keep Putnam Beautiful, and I cannot remember your name, so if you'll prompt me.
Nicole Grace.
Nicole Grace, I should remember that. Anyway, thank you for being here. Next item of business is item five, public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information. Please limit your comment to three minutes. Public comment portion cards are available in the entrance and the exit of the building. We wish that, we prefer that you fill those out and give them to Sarah Oliver to your left, to your right, to my left. And when you come forward, please speak clearly into the microphone, and like I said, please limit your comments to roughly three minutes. So we'll start with Mr. Douglas Hayes, if you'll come forward.
My name's Douglas Hayes. I live at 216 Hilltop Avenue, Satsuma, Florida. Before you hit me with the three minutes, I wanted to commend Mr. Smith's office. I gave a phone call to talk to Mr. Smith, and he was busy, and his assistant immediately, within a short timeframe, called me back to let me know that he received my message and that, it was where I was left in a loop, not knowing that it was really good business. And I think that that sets a precedence for some of the other departments. Now you're going to hit the timer. The next thing is, in regards to the fire trucks, I would like to offer a suggestion is that, from what I've gathered in my experience of speaking to some of the firehouses, is that some of the equipment needs repair and that I should hold a fundraiser, and they say, "Well, we don't own the fire trucks." I'd like to offer a suggestion that the two fire trucks in need, that because they're volunteer houses, is for them to hold a fundraiser, and there's the FEMA grant and the USDA grant falls under categories for populations, communities under 10,000, and that that might give us better eligibility and let the firehouse buy their own fire truck. That might take the heat off of the county as a whole. The second thing is in regards to the EOC sign, that apparently it needs a replacement or there's concern about that. A good electronics technician should be able to do a diagnostics. That's simply a batch of light bulbs, you're going to have a power interface, you're going to have a control module and all the wiring in between as a simplicity. I do believe that even if the power, the control module is obsolete, it wouldn't take much to find another one and, because you're just trying to run lights. And because it's out in the elements, and from what I gather is this one side of the sign, if I was doing diagnostics right off the bat, is I would look at all my connections because it's probably weathered, you probably have electrolysis at the connectors, and then switch to the other side to see if it's the illumination board, and it's a matter of, of simple elimination. I'm an aviation electronics technician, I specialize in radar and communications to do repair to a component level. That's not an airplane. So then, anyway, if you want me to donate my time to help you a little bit, I don't have a problem with that. The final thing is the animal control or animal services. I did have the opportunity to go to the Animal Services Advisory Board yesterday, and it was interesting. I spouted about my concern about the timeframe, and finally got my opportunity to speak. My vibe is, they don't want outsiders. The second thing is that, because I'm long-winded, that I was cut short in my little, trying to present my ideas as quickly as possible, and the issue was because they had to get back to their jobs and businesses. And that's my grievance, is that by having it Monday at 9:00 in the morning, that the citizen that should be participating in the Citizens Advisory is not attending because they have lives during that time to generate income. And that I suggest that the Citizens Advisory Board be held in the evenings with the citizens. You had two government entities along with a person that's taking the data, and that the citizens can gather as a group, discuss and hash things over, and then periodically hold workshops during the business hours with the government entities. That way, the citizens can put their, their time in. I'd also like to suggest that when you narrow down your site selection to perhaps present to the newspaper and do one of those surveys to get an outreach to what the citizens want. It's been presented to me that there's a lot of ambition to put it close to the jail, and the people that I speak to say that that's no better than going to the landfill, that's off the beaten path. And finally, I know that the intent-
Hey, Mr. Hayes, if you could wrap it up now, okay?
Yes, okay, and the final thing is, part of it was the idea to use a prison program to reduce recidivism by giving them some dog training or dog handling or vet tech experience. If it's vet tech, medical land of the, of the world, that they're going to have the certification, they'll be unemployable because they are convicted felon, and in the medical world, you can't do it. So you're going to give them all this training, they won't be able to utilize it. But horticulture-
All right, thank you, Mr. Hayes.
You can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, any questions?
Uh, could, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Harrow?
Um, the citizens in the committee have the autonomy to set their own meeting times, so if they have a grievance about their meeting times, they can discuss it amongst themselves and vote for another meeting time. That's the way it works. And as far as the sheriff's department being off the beaten path, I don't know how much more proximal you can get to major roads at the intersection of Highway 19 and 17, so I would just leave you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay, next speaker, Mr. Frederick Freeze. Road condition on El Prado Court is what it looks like. Good morning.
I'm Frederick Freeze, 123 El Prado Court, and I want to thank you for allowing me some time to raise this issue. I've enjoyed being a resident over 12 years down here, thought I retired, but the Lord had other ideas for me, and that's part of my problem on the road condition. This past Christmas Eve, one of my parishioners had to come out to El Prado Road and pick me up at the end of El Prado Court, that is, because of the muddy conditions. We had a couple of vehicles that were stuck on the road, so my wife and I had to put on boots and walk out to her car and to make the services, and of course, they wouldn't have a candlelight communion service without the pastor. That kind of was a little bit of a huff and puff for me. I don't do walking through mud at my age as I used to. We've been in contact with Jeff Rawls, and we appreciate his help, and I believe Mike Nimitz is also looking into our situation. Yesterday, we were advised by the post office that we will no longer be able to pick up our mail here in town because they have not delivered mail to our site for over a year and a half plus because of the road conditions. I'm not asking for a paved road, but what I'm asking for, can you grade it? Some of my neighbors have thrown some kind of slurry junk out there and made it almost like a mud bogging location, and there are still two large piles of something white fill that's remained in the hip, in the middle of the road, so we have to detour around it. All I expect is to be able to get out, serve my church, and serve my county in some way as I can. Not much to ask for in your semi-retirement years. So I would appreciate if there's anything you can do, grade the road, crown it, there are some ditches that need some cleaning, but we'd like to get out and enjoy our county, but sometimes we're stuck there just by virtue of the conditions. I appreciate your time, and I hope I'll hear more in the future from you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Freeze.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Suggs, are you aware of this?
I am now, sir.
Can we try to work to a resolution?
Yeah, I'll get with, I'll get with public works and see what we, what we have out there. You said it was El Prado?
That's correct.
Okay, I made some notes.
They had at one time received permission from all the neighbors to do something about it, and then the whole thing just fell through, and I don't want to go through another year of everything falling through the cracks. All I'm asking for is grading and something we used to do when I lived in a rural community in New Jersey, grade it and crown the roads. It does work, and I grew up as a kid watching that get done. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Turner?
Oh, yeah, has anybody checked yet to see if this is a private road? I mean, that's the first question you got to ask, class-two road, okay? Commissioner Rawls said he thought it was a class-two road.
I cannot answer that right now. I will have to look into the situation, but from what it sounds like, from what he's indicating, permission from the residents, I would say that's probably what we're dealing with here, is a private road. So I would definitely look at and see where we're at with this.
He seemed to think it's a class-two, but-
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harvey, do you have a comment?
No, sir. Thank you.
I want to thank you for adding that in. When we purchased down here, by the way, there were road signs, stop signs, all down the road, and we were led to believe that it was a county road.
It is, according to Commissioner Rawls, it's a class-two road, which means it only gets maintained by the county when it becomes impassable.
Well, I, I ain't trying to try to get down the road.
Sound like us to that point.
Sound like us to that point.
That's Mike Nimitz, by the way, that's who you've been communicating with, so-
And I'll get your contact information, and I'll look in our records and see the last time it was serviced, and we'll definitely address this situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Harvey?
Have a good day.
Mr. Nimitz, can you bring that back to our transportation meeting today? I know it's a whole lot of time.
Sure, I can, I can give an update at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Mr. Mark Fisher.
Did it not know you were coming up?
Mark Fisher, County Road 310. I come and I listen to what goes on here, and I hear you say about bringing people to Putnam County and, you know, making a go of things, and then young lady back here that's Make Putnam Beautiful, and then I'm driving out 20 toward Interlochen the other day, and here's the mowers mowing the friggin' garbage, excuse my language, I just get upset with this, mowing the garbage on the side of the road. I've had, I, I brought that up before to people, and I get excuses. I, down on 310, I've had them come out there three weeks before they mow and pick up the garbage. What good does that do? There's a, they might as well not even do it, just keep mowing over the garbage. I mean, if I had been, when I was looking for a place to move, when we moved here, if I'd been running, coming into Putnam County on 20, and it was like that, I would have kept right on driving. And I just, I, sorry, I get upset over it, so. Something needs to be done. I mean, I don't know why they can't pick up the same day. I, and if you can't, and if you can't do a job right, don't do it at all. Maybe you shouldn't be doing it. So that's my, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, for good.
Commissioner Rawls?
Art, I know this probably goes the same, but I'm going to say it. We are very challenged right now from an employee status, and everybody's working as hard as they can, doing the best job they can.
I understand.
I agree that we do need to make changes in our operations, but-
But I'm saying the same thing. If you can't do it right, don't do it. Let it grow. I mean, if you can't get it picked up before they do it, that looks so terrible. At least have the grass hide the garbage.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Suggs?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fisher, was that Highway 20?
Yes.
Okay. That's a state highway, sir, so the county was not mowing that road. That would be, that would be the state DOT folks. So it's not an excuse, sir, it's just a fact.
Like I said, 310?
Yeah.
They come out there three weeks before they pick up it? That doesn't, that doesn't know it at all.
I do agree that we have some issues that we need to work on our county roads, but we can't fix the state roads.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Commissioner Harvey?
We talked about, Mr. Fisher, and I don't need you to come back up, I know it's kind of hard, we talked about this in our last workshop meeting, and our Rotary Club actually quit picking up garbage because of that, but we're, we're encouraged about some changes that Mr. Nimitz is looking at making, and that's to put an interactive mowing schedule online so we can know when the mowers are headed to the community, and then our club would be glad to go back out and pick it up again. Commissioner Rawls is right, we are challenged trying to even find employees right now. It's a great economy out there, everything's doing well, and workers are hard to come by, but, you know, maybe this interactive map would, would allow us in the Rotary Club to say, we'll go out there and pick it up if we know that that's not going to happen three weeks after the fact. So just to let you know, I didn't mean for you to have to walk all the way back.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So what? Excuse me. So most of the time, I see the prisoners out there picking up. Why can't, you know, I said they can't line that up with, align with them mowing. Why not?
They can. The problem is, we can't, we, we've got prison crews that sometimes don't show up, and they're, they're busy in other places, so there's no excuse. I'll tell you that now. There's no excuse.
Like I said, then, don't do it.
Yeah, I, we're trying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Sam Carr?
Hello, Commissioner Sam Carr, 101 Riverside Drive, Satsuma, Channel marker number 13. I'm here today representing the Putnam County Waterways and Trails Committee, your committee, and I'd like to report on where we are as far as, as the maintenance issues that we were talking about in your workshop a couple of weeks ago. Just to talk about our committee for a second, it's made up of some very engaged citizens. In my tenure on this committee, we've never had to cancel a meeting because of lack of attendance. We've always had, 100% of the time, have had meetings where there's been a quorum. That means there are some interested people on this committee. And what has the committee accomplished? Well, we've made the Putnam County the trail hub of North Florida. We have, we're assisted in the creation of Putnam Blue Ways and Trails CSO with hundreds of hiking, biking, paddling opportunities. We've assisted FWC with developing and, and designating our landings, and we initiated the development of Putnam County's National Recreation Trail, the Bartum Trail here in Putnam County. So that's a pretty good item of what we've done. We also work with Parks and Recs Department with the, we're going to be working with them on the Tanglewild Grand Opening, and we were involved with the procurement and design of Holmes Biggs Park in Georgetown. That was what our committee has done in the past. So what we're doing now is we're working very hard with you guys to figure out how do we cover these maintenance issues that are going to come due 10 or 15 years from now. And so we've, the committee has contacted neighboring counties, state agencies, and individuals that are involved with these trails, and we're smarter now than we were a month ago. Most of the counties, what we found out is, most of the counties' trail maintenance is done through their Parks and Recs Department. In fact, as Volusia County has 50 employees in their Parks and Recs Department for maintenance alone. Okay? So they, they can afford it, and that's the way they do it. Many counties partially fund their trails by, by using their tourism dollars, which only makes sense. Trails are tourism magnets, and, and so those tourism dollars should go there. There's a huge amount of volunteerism here in Putnam County, and, and that can be corralled and used along those lines. And we now have the trail maintenance figures from the county and from other sources, so we know what the target actually is. So we look forward to working with you folks on getting this job done. As DOT mentioned, we got a deadline, and we got to figure this thing out before that deadline, according to Mr. Turner, right? And that's my story.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Sam, I've, I've been working some with Craig on this and trying to identify some funding sources other than the county, because I've told, I told you in the workshop, I've told Craig as we went along, and I've tried to work through the thing with him. I don't see how that I can, that I can obligate the county to $130,000 a year, every year, and that was the numbers given in the workshop, starting in five years. So what do you, and, well, that's what was told to me. I can't go on anything other than what was told to me now. So those were the numbers that were given in workshop. I think we're going to meet again sometime in the not-too-distant future, and hopefully the numbers can change, but I told him the best thing to do would be to pick which one of these roads that he wants to work- these roads that he wants the worst, trails that he wants the worst and try to do it like we've done the others, one trail at a time, instead of just trying to go do them all at one time. So that just, I'm just saying that that might be where we need to go because I can't, I can't in good conscience fund, obligate the county to pay that kind of money in five to 10 years without knowing what's gonna happen. If we have another turn down in the economy, what do we, what do we do? Fire three deputies? Make them ride together because we can't afford a second car for them? I mean, what, the funding's got to come from somewhere and it's got to come from an essential public service or the money that we're using somewhere else. And I know that y'all want to get the TDC money, but unless something's changed, the TDC doesn't allow for that at this time because they only allow for like things that are gonna bring additional tourism or additional monies into the county. And I don't know that you could get there without making a change. So I understand what you're saying, I get there, but I look forward to working with y'all again before the deadline comes. I just felt like I needed to tell you upfront that that's where I'm coming from.
Appreciate that, Mr. Turner, and I, I understand, you know, your statement, but Putnam County has a wonderful opportunity. Right now, the county's responsible for maintaining three miles of trails. Three miles. That's what we maintain now. And you know how many miles of trails we have? Almost 40. So we've been blessed, frankly, and so forth. It's just, we gotta figure this out. That's all I've got to say, really, is we gotta figure this out and everything. I just don't, you know, looking out and shutting the door on us like you, like it appears, that's how it feels to me, you know, is not the right way to go. Putnam County's better than that. We need to figure this out.
I don't think I ever said I'd shut the door on that.
I'm gonna answer, I don't think anything was said about shutting the door. We just didn't jump on board and go along with exactly what y'all asked us for. I think that's being fiduciary responsible to this county and for future county commissioners. We all understand the value of trails and ecotourism and y'all have done a fantastic job, but don't stand up here and beat us up that we closed the door on y'all because we did not, because we could've closed the door and said no.
Yep.
But we didn't do that, did we, Commissioners?
No, sir.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Rawls?
So we did get some recent numbers. I got an email from Dania Nicole and it was either $405 or $450 a mile, so we're talking less than a third of what we discussed the other day. So I think when Waterways and Trails comes back, the presentation is gonna be a lot different and it's really gonna settle the heartburn that we have looking forward. And I know that we're looking at a 15-year window, not a five-year window. I agree with you, leaving three portions of trails open, a gap is a gap, so, you know, people aren't gonna pick their bicycles up and walk or put them in a car and transport them to the next leg of the trail, so it really, it's important to me as a commissioner to make sure that we get these gaps closed up and finish the trails and have maintenance for them. And, you know, if we're looking at $50,000 versus $130,000, that's a whole different conversation looking in the future. So I'm excited for the Waterways and Trails Committee. I think you guys are doing a terrific job. And something you didn't mention in there that has gone overlooked is the work that David has done on the, going around and looking at all of our boat ramps and coming back with the report.
Exactly.
This is a citizen's group that took it upon themselves to go out and look at every single boat ramp in Putnam County, take a look at websites that talk about where ramps are and he knows the conditions of them, some that are not even usable, but at least because of his work, we have that. So I applaud you guys on your efforts. You're doing a terrific job and keep coming with this because it's, this is how government works. You guys are doing a terrific job and don't get dissuaded.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam. Commissioner Harvey?
Sam, may I have you for a moment?
Sure.
I was gonna say this at the end, but you're here now, so last week I happened to be, President Trump invited Commissioners and I was able to go to Washington DC. This is my third visit up to the Capitol and they asked, what can we do for you? Sam, as you know, you've been in this position before, you only get so many bullets, you only get so many asks and you better make it right. There was three ask I asked for, for Putnam County. One was our infrastructure needed improvement. One was our bridge funding that needs improvement because it's not just two bridges, it's many bridges that are old throughout this county. And the last one was rails to trails. And I was on the phone with the Intergovernmental Assistant to the Department of Transportation yesterday, I'll share her name at 2:00 today, talking again yesterday about where we can get some money and she's looking for that. So Commissioner Turner is right, you know, let's look under every rock, let's look under every place and if we can get someone else to help us pay the bill and pay 50% or 25%, I'm there. And, and so I had three ask, I had three bullets. I shot those bullets, okay?
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, next, Ms. Andrea Conover, TDC appointment.
Hi, I'm Andrea Conover. I live at 105 Rivers Edge Drive in East Palaca. I want to talk about the appointments or reappointments to the TDC, specifically focused on kind of the process of what's been happening the past few months and my concerns about that process. So I applied for the TDC, to be on the TDC back in May and attended two of the meetings. There were two vacancies at the end of September and I was hoping to get one of those vacancies. The ordinance says there are supposed to be three people who are own accommodations in the county and three people that are involved in the tourism industry. So as my business for the future brewery and restaurant and event space, I'm desperately going to be dependent on tourism, not just the residents for my customers, so I consider myself highly motivated and with a vested interest in tourism for this county. At the two TDC meetings, I guess specifically the second one, when the TDC voted to reappoint the two members, there was no mention, no discussion about my qualifications or even any mention, again, that I had been, that I had applied. So that was very disappointing. So the TDC voted, among themselves, the five people that were there voted to reappoint the two members whose terms were up. One of those members had served for the vacancy that I was hoping for, that member had served on the TDC for 27 years, since the beginning of the TDC, 27 years. And I know at the last Commission meeting, Commissioner Turner said, why should you kick somebody off the TDC who's served and wants to continue to serve? Well, I didn't think it was supposed to be a lifetime appointment and it might be time for some new ideas on the TDC. I have a, my, I have a Masters in Business Administration, I have 20 years sales experience, sales and marketing, then it's 27 years. I've worked in three different regional nonprofits for the past seven years. I came from St. John's County, I'm familiar with the 13 counties along the St. John's River, got to know a lot about how those counties handle their tourism and have some new ideas for what we can do in this, in this county. Let's see. I know St. John's County just recently hired a tourism director and they specifically plan to promote Hastings as a cultural and historical agricultural destination and, you know, that's kind of right in our backyard, so we need to jump on that also. I know the person who's asking to be reappointed, I know he's your friend, Commissioner Turner, I know he's your friend also, but it might be time for some new ideas on, rather than reappointing someone who's already served for 27 years. I don't want to make a personal about if I'm better qualified or he's better qualified, but I do have a vested interest in tourism for this county and I know my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
Yes. Like I said last time, I appreciate the fact that you want to serve, I really do, but I disagree with you. I think that somebody who's served for 27 years, still wants to serve, still goes to all those meetings and still does everything he's supposed to, and yes, John is a friend of mine, but that doesn't have anything to do that he's done a good job for 27 years as one of the founding members of the TDC Committee. So, yes, so we're gonna take somebody that's been in business around here for 40 years and kick them off the TDC and put somebody on who's claimed the fame as it may be sometime in the future, you're gonna open a business in Putnam County, but you've been talking about it for two to three years and haven't done it yet.
That actually hasn't been that long.
Well, whatever. I'm just telling you that you're wanting us to kick somebody else off and you're wanting to make it look like it's a good old boy thing when it has nothing to do with that whatsoever. He's done a good job in the 27 years he's been there, he still shows up to every meeting and he still shows up prepared. He's got a cultural side to it that hardly anybody else on the committee has if we got rid of and put someone else on there. I'm not saying that when somebody in the future decides they need to get off, because I understand there is another one that is fixing to get off sometime in the future, that might be different, but you're asking us to kick off a respected member of that committee just because you want to be on there. That's not, just not a fair request at all and then make out like because you don't get your way that we're being just a good old boy bunch of guys. Just not true. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
This is gonna come as a complete shock to everybody, but I completely disagree with what Mr. Turner just said and I am being facetious. I personally believe that term limits are a good thing. Anybody that's followed me on Facebook and followed my campaign, I think that if we don't give people an opportunity to bring in new ideas, we are destined to repeat the history that we've been laying out in front of us. So I applaud you for your efforts, I applaud you for your comments. I personally agree that we need people, new people to come in and take a look at the TDC. And what I've been looking at recently, the TDC has never been operated properly anyways, we're overpaying for services that we have contracted, we're overpaying our contract, but nobody's paying attention to that part of it, so maybe having a fresh set of eyes on it would bring out the fact that we are actually expending too much money where we shouldn't be and be able to put more money in. I recently found out that we have about a million two sitting in investments and savings in the tourist development and the first question I asked Ms. Papel was, why aren't we spending this in the community? Why did the Blue Crab Festival not get funded? Why, why aren't we putting more money into our community? Why are we sitting on over a million dollars right now as we speak? So I would love to have somebody like you on there versus somebody that spends 27 years looking at something but never really understanding what the ordinances and the contract with the chamber require. So I applaud you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Turner?
And again, Mr. Rawls uses this point to bring it back down to the chamber, who everybody knows he dislikes tremendously. Notice I didn't say you hated him this time, even though that's true. So, so I would, I would just like to say that, look, we're gonna discuss this later, I would appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, if you'd keep this on task. The task is, is whether we appoint her to TDC or the member that was recommended by the others, it'll be done at the end of the meeting and so...
How we're gonna handle this is, when we get to appointments, we're gonna ask each Commissioner if they have any appointments. We're gonna save this particular item till last. We're gonna vote on Ms. Teresa Miller first because she is in a classification that she's the only one that has applied fits, because I believe it's hospitality, is that correct, Dana? Okay? And then so the second one we'll vote on would be Mr. John Hodge and Andrea Conover for that particular position, so that's how we're gonna handle that.
If I might, in rebuttal, Mr. Turner, this isn't personal, it's the chamber. The fact that we have our economic development, our tourist development, our economic development authority, it's all run through the chamber. So as long as we have everything in-house at the chamber, it makes it look like that, you know, when I speak about it, I have a personal axer ground with the chamber. The fact is, if we did like the surrounding counties or other counties in Florida do, they don't have it as part of their chamber. And an exit letter written to all the city commissioners, this number two candidate that applied for the position, the city commission wrote a letter to the city commissioners and in it he said, he recommended, and this is somebody I believe from Utah, that economic development be taken out of the chamber and put in the county, separated from the chamber, so it's a separate autonomous entity and the chamber could focus, in his words, on sustainability of our small businesses. So this is nothing personal with the chamber. I think that in looking at the contracts, one of them 20 years old and one of them 25 years old, we've had mismanagement of funds, we've had mismanagement of contracts and we've had ample opportunity over the past 20-plus years to correct this. So again, this isn't personal, it's business. It's the business of the people.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna move on. Can we get...
Can I say two more things? I'm sorry, I forgot. The minutes and the agenda for the TDC aren't actually posted and I think they're supposed to be. They're not on the county website and the most recent one that was published on the chamber website was September 2018. So we're not actually getting, the public isn't getting visibility into the, when the meetings happen for the TDC and they're supposed to be open to the public and the minutes aren't published. So that's another concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Conover. Yeah, Mr. Kilabrew?
Ed Kilabrew, 146, Barden Estate Circle, Palaca, Florida. I just got a question for you, Commissioner Rawls. I mean, you brought up the subject and it just, I just, you didn't finish it. You said there's $1.2 million sitting there and you asked Mrs. Papel where that money is or where it's gone. Can you answer that question for me now?
There's $700,000 to $500,000. One of them is invested and one of them is sitting in a savings account. It's under the 131 fund in the county.
Okay. And why did she tell you that? I mean...
Well, when I walked in and asked her, why, you know, what do we really have, and she answered the question, which is a lot of money in TDC, the answer is yes. And I said, why? And she said, we're not budgeting the full amount every year. For whatever reason, we, instead of telling the TDC Committee, hey, you can spend a million dollars this year because the money's there. Not to say that you have to, but it wasn't presented to them as such. So right now we spend north of $160,000 paying the chamber for one full-time position. We pay for other things like their, a third of their telephones, a third of their copy machine, a third of their internet. I'm sorry, we pay 100% of their internet between economic and tourist development, we pay 100% of that. We are propping up a failed nonprofit corporation by putting in 70% of their annual revenue. It doesn't leave any money really left for them to put back out on the streets in the form of economic and tourist development. Why we have so much money in TDC? I don't know, I just became aware of this, I made a request of our finance department a few weeks ago and got it. You know, I've got a stack of papers, but I think sitting on my desk right there I could go get and it would take us about two hours to go through and digest it.
I'm not asking for that.
So to answer your question is, the money's just sitting, I don't know why.
Okay, all right. And also, I want to speak to the fact of John Hodge. He is a personal friend of mine. He's a very good man, nothing against Ms. Conover, she's, I think she's a good lady, she's trying to start a business, just like anybody else, she's trying to get on, get up going. I know Mr. Hodge's heart is for our county. He works very hard on a lot of different things. His mind is just great about things. He stays ahead of things, he doesn't stay behind them, he doesn't wait for things to happen before he adjusts to them and starts moving forward. I just wanted to say that in his favor. And also, Mr. Chairman, I want to yield my time to my card for the other people in Barden that are speaking today.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna get you next. Okay, so you don't wanna do that? Okay, Ms. Papel?
Thanks, Ed.
I'm gonna have Ms. Papel make a comment and we're gonna move on and get away from this subject, okay?
Just a small correction, all of the TDC money is budgeted.
This year.
Yes.
Yes. But it hasn't been the past, that's what I said.
It was last year as well.
It wasn't used, it just keeps rolling in. We're not, if it's budgeted, we're not using it. It just sits and rolls over and accumulates and accumulates and accumulates. $1.2 million didn't happen.
We're not gonna solve that, I was gonna say one more comment and that's it.
Just correcting the budget comment.
Okay, and that's it. Do you want to make a comment and we'll move on? Do you want to make a comment, Commissioner Sigs?
Yes, sir, I think it's appropriate and I think I need to address it. It was said here today on the record, so it needs to be addressed. I'm gonna go ahead and extend an invitation to Commissioner Rawls, just like I do to all five of my Commissioners, that anytime you have a question or a concern about, about a budgeted item or whether, where we sit with spending or revenues and the comment was made about misuse of funds, that goes directly to staff. I'd like to set an appointment, Mr. Rawls, so we can sit down and discuss that. I'd like to set an appointment, Mr. Ross, so we can sit down and discuss that.
Sir, we've already had that appointment. You and I sat down and I also brought it to the commission at a workshop.
And I just, I appreciate that, but you're gonna say here on the record today and said that staff is misusing funds and that's just not true.
I, I brought this to you and then I brought it to the, I brought it to the commission at a workshop. It was shot down. There was, it was said that I was animus toward the chamber and the, the conversation ended. I'd be more than happy to bring it, record it in the tape and if we have to and play it back.
What I'm saying, as chairman, is y'all need to get back together and then bring it back to the board. We make a, we can workshop this.
I'll be more than happy to bring it. If you listen, last time you guys told me to shut up, basically.
Well, all I wanna make sure is that if we are misusing any funds and if we are, we need to address that, but I don't know if we are.
I've already pointed out to you.
And I'd like to make sure before comments are made publicly about staff and what this commission's doing, that we have our facts and then before we make comments.
It's a difference of opinion.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I think that's what it's coming down to, is a difference in opinion. So, we're gonna move on to the next speaker about Barden Bridge and I, it's M., I believe, Newman or Noonan. Please, if you'd state your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone.
My name is Michelle Newman and I live at one eleven Eagles Nest Trail. Yesterday, we had a situation on Meadowlark Lane and there was a logging company with logging trucks and equipment there. I have a small culvert and I was concerned that they were going to crush the culvert that I put in with my own money to avoid flooding when the hurricanes and excessive rains come in. One of the questions, there was a supervisor for the road department that came out and also a law enforcement agent came out. One of the things that were brought up was how those logging trucks came out there. You have to go down three oh nine D, Barden Road, to get there. The supervisor had stated that they had followed one of them in. And I asked him why, was something not said? Obviously, they were talking, we're not talking a little tiny piece of equipment. We're talking something that seriously exceeded the weight limit on the bridge. And he said, there is nothing that they could do legally. It was not, not his response, you know, not his responsibility or, or he couldn't do it. He didn't have the authority to stop them and say anything to them. And he said, if it continues, they were going to close Barden Bridge. If they close Barden Bridge, I don't know if you guys have ever been out there. I don't know if you realize how many families that live out there. There's elderly people that need that ambulance. We need the fire department. I have a horse rescue that I personally fund, that I have hay delivered to me every week. I don't know how I'm going to sustain those animals if I can't get my hay back and forth across that bridge. I understand that it is a money issue, but I just, there has to be another way besides closing the bridge. You've got families that are driving forty miles a week to take their kids to school bus stops. If you close that bridge and we have to go out and around, you're talking a hundred miles a week. These kids are going to have to get up at five o'clock in the morning when they already get up. I think it's ridiculous, the, the amount of time they have to spend now getting up to go to school. I mean, early, elementary kids. It's just a hardship on everyone out there and there has to be a way to keep from closing that bridge. I wished I had a suggestion for you. I'm just trying to present my opinion. I'm, I don't realize, I don't think anybody realizes how the closure of that bridge is gonna affect everyone that's out there. And that's all I have to say.
Unless I missed a meeting, there's been no discussion about closing that bridge.
Well, that's not what the county is saying.
We've reduced the tonnage of the bridge. Right now, right now...
The tonnage that's out there now, they're not, they're not adhering to those warning signs. They're just flying through there. I'm talking, you're talking heavy logging equipment with the cutters and the big back hoes and all that came right across that bridge yesterday. Now, you can't tell me that that did not exceed that weight limit, but there's nothing being done to enforce the weight limit. And that's what the county, the road department guy had said, if they cannot stop it, they'll have to close it.
Mr. Chairman, may I request that we go ahead and listen to whoever wants to speak on Barden and then we can talk about it all at one time?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, Commissioners, if I may, to, to address the, the issue with vehicles exceeding the capacity of the bridge, we have placed the signage out there that's required by Florida Highway Patrol to have them be able to enforce the weight limits. So, that signage is in place. We have sent out a letter, letter formally requesting them to engage people who are violating this. So, enforcement is on the way.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mike.
But not closure.
There, there is no intent to close this bridge at all right now. We do have the reduced weight loads. We will be doing monthly inspections on it to make sure it's still able to handle those loads. Again, at the two PM meeting, we will go into extensive detail of our plan of action that will cover all of that.
Okay. All right. Next speaker, Dino Romeo, Romeo?
We'll answer all those questions when we're done, sir.
Hello, sir. It's an honor to be here today. I wanna thanks everybody here and just appreciate that you're here to, to help us out.
Can you state your name and address, sir?
Dino Romeo, ten thirty, Barden Road, Palatka, Florida.
You can raise the mic if you want.
Thank you, sir. Is that better? Okay. Did you hear everything?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not good at public speaking, so bear with me.
I'm not either, apparently.
I'm here talking about bridge structure on Barden Road, seventy-six, four oh oh seven. We met with you, a few of you earlier today and you answered a lot of questions on us. And I wanna thank you for all that. I do see that we have a lot of problems in this county with the finances. The financial problems are gonna be a, an issue for us. We can rectify it, of course. Mr. Terry Turner helped us out, understanding a lot of that. And I wanna thank him for that. A lot of explanations I'm sure need to be discussed with the people of Barden are here and if anybody is gonna address that today for them, I'd appreciate it because what you told me was very understanding and I accept all those problems you're doing. I think you guys are doing a great job on the bridge. So, I wanna commend you all for that. I know you're trying to do your best and you have some issues you have to work around. So, one of them is the county road. I wanna address the county line road that really needs to be made so that we can get through. That's gonna be an issue for us, to get through this issue. So, grading, filling, making it addressable for trucks. You've got a lot of businesses up there that need that. So, please, look into that and address that for us before taking on this bridge problem. The state funding has some issues to get that state funding, to address the bridge. You explained that to me and that was very understandable and I do, I do accept that explanation you gave me. The length of time the bridge is gonna be closed for heavy traffic could be a year and that's an understandable statement, too. It's gonna take time to fix it. I wanna thank everybody for all those issues. I do have one other issue that I must address that just came to me. Rice Creek Bridge, seventy-six, four oh oh six, that's an issue, back-to-back. Please, look into this, address it. It's gotta be addressed at the same time. We have an issue there. Please, help us out. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any other citizens wanting to speak on the Barden Bridge issue or any other issues? Okay. Could you come forward and state your name and address?
I'm Roger Bush, live one oh five Burt's Trail, Palatka, Florida. I own a business out there. If that weight limit y'all put on there, you're gonna shut me down. That weight limit you got on there, you're gonna shut down Ernie Kramer's business. You're gonna shut down the two chicken farm business. You're gonna shut out about five, six businesses in that area. They will not go around, way around on Sun Garden Road to come in and out. It's too expensive to go that way and the, the chicken farm people, they ain't gonna haul eggs down a dirt road. And them trucks, they have scrambled eggs and get to the end. So, I'm just saying, with y'all, what y'all do, that what I mentioned about the, the weight limit, where y'all grab these numbers from? Just cover your honey, I'll have a number, seven ton, we know they ain't gonna run over that. You have one engineer or a group of engineers, 'cause that's like lawyers. One lawyer tell you one thing, next lawyer tell you another thing. You can't believe either one of them till you get three or four of them together. That's what I feel about engineers. Every one of them gonna have a different opinion. We need to take care of, the weight limit, I go with that, but make sure we get a decent weight limit that people can live with. If y'all, the weight limit right now, if y'all starting forcing it bad, you're gonna shut down all five of these businesses right now. Or more, if pot water. So, you know, think of the citizens here, how many people we affect, our jobs, our workforce, you know, that depend on us, by grabbing these numbers of weight limits. So, but, you know, that's what I'm saying. Just, y'all think about that. And that's it.
Yes, sir. We, we have. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bush. All right. Any other citizens wishing to speak on this matter? Okay. Please come forward and state your name and...
Me neither.
Either one of you.
Neither of you, only one.
Come up, if you want, I wanna, I wanna finish the, if, if any other visuals wants to speak on the, the bridge issue?
Troy Allison, Allison Farms, twelve fifty-one Barden Road. I understand about this bridge thing and it's killing me right now. I contract for Publix Grocery Stores and Cal Maine Foods. This is the last thing they wanna hear. Period. I service, I'm one of four farms that service the whole state of Florida. We need to get this thing straightened up real quick. In my opinion, I understand about bridges and falling and crushing, whatever it is. It don't matter. I think the quickest way out of this thing for half these people in here, all rely on trucks to get their businesses taken care of. We all can agree on that, correct?
Yes.
We don't have regular two thousand pound cars. My opinion, if you're gonna shut that bridge down or control the weight limit, my opinion is, you better get a hold of a governor in the state of Florida and you better control that road on the county line road. You're probably gonna have to mill it, put millings on it or pave it. It's gonna have to be done. Call up Clay County, have them split it with you guys. That's the only way you're gonna get in there. Now, listen, my products is a little bit different than Ernie Kramer or Rogers Coca-Cola truck stuff. Half these guys got stuff that aren't as valuable as mine. Remember, I'm hauling eggs. You understand, guys? If you shut me down, I'm getting five to six loads a week at my front farm. The back farm is four loads a week. Think about that. I'm, I'm ousting about a million eggs a week when I'm full, full forward. You're gonna, you're gonna hurt, if that, if I can't get eggs in out of there, you're gonna hurt seventeen families, not including mine, not including Alan in the back. We need to solve this and solve it quick. Because I have not brought this up to Cal Maine Foods and Publix yet and that's gonna, and I, and I produce the brown egg. So, if you walk into any Publix in the state of Florida, it has my name on it. But we need to solve it. And I'll try to help you guys the best I can, but I'm saying, if you guys got that weight limit on that bridge, it's time to pave that road on county line road, like now. You understand, guys? I know I'm, I'm being hard about this, but it is what it is. But I can't, I, I've already tried to haul eggs through the dirt road and literally like Roger Bush said, I literally had to hose half the trailer out on my reefer. Not gonna happen. So, you know, you guys can get a hold of me. You two are part of Barden, one side in east, one side on west. I'm willing to work with you, but I got the most valuable product out there. I mean, fragile, let's put it that way. So, I'd appreciate it, whatever we can come up with. Mr. Harvey, I appreciate, I know you've, you and I have been friends for a while here and there, so, that's all I gotta say. So, please, let's like, get this worked out. All right? All good? Any questions?
Are you available to come to the meeting this afternoon at two o'clock?
I'm gonna stick around. I just found out about it now.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah. 'Cause I've got a lot more to say, too, but, but this is a good for starters.
And you're not yelling at us. This is what we need.
I do believe in term limits, too. All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you. Any other visuals wishing to speak on the bridge issue?
I do. I do, too.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, you got a member from the audience?
Do you wanna speak on something different, Ms. Linda?
Yeah.
Okay. Come forward now. Come forward and we'll get it over with.
My name is Linda Kreider. I reside at one sixteen Kirkland Street, Palatka, Florida. And I'm here to speak about the trails and the possibility of the trail maintenance agreement being signed by the county with the Florida Department of Transportation. And to encourage that, I'd like to just give a little bit of background and it's aimed at, it's aimed at the idea of return on investment because I think that's what you all are concerned about and interested about and wanna see what, if we put money forward, what we can expect. I wanna give you just a little bit of background to let you know why I'm passionate about this. Fourteen years ago, I moved from Gainesville, Florida and bought a home in Putnam County, Palatka. I retired from the University of Florida where I taught urban and regional planning for twenty-four years. Needless to say, my Gator friends...
I really hate to interrupt you. You guys don't leave yet.
Y'all don't leave.
Please, we're gonna talk about this in just a few minutes. And we need this to go back to Barden, what we're fixing to say, so, please, y'all don't leave yet.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, Linda.
Sorry about that, Linda.
That's okay. I'll continue with my comments and try and make them brief. I just wanted to explain my Gator friends, of course, were a little perplexed, why was I moving to Palatka, Florida? And when I explained the fact that I saw a future where this place would become, was already emerging as the trail hub for northeast Florida, for kayaking, bicycling, hiking and a number of outdoor activities, that that's a place I wanted to grow old in. In two thousand six, I was the director of Bike Florida and I planned a bike ride. Maybe some of you remember it. We brought eight hundred cyclists here for a week-long tour and spent a lot of money in Palatka, stayed here, started and ended the ride here. We've come back with Bike Florida three years, three different times since then. And I was persuaded by Craig McLean when he put up a slide during that bike tour that showed Palatka as the hub for a number of trails that would come in from all directions and because it was the only place you could cross the St. John's River for forty miles in either direction safely on a bicycle. And so, that convinced me. In two thousand twelve, I received from the National Rails to Trails Conservancy a Trail Champion Award and they gave me a thousand dollars to put toward a trail. Instead, I put it toward the development of the Putnam Blueways and Trails Citizen Support Organization because I saw that as an avenue by which we could promote and support the trails and continue our trail initiative, including volunteer support for maintenance. Three years ago, I bought, I turned my house that I had bought into a bed and breakfast called the Bartram Inn.[1668.26] I spent $25,000 investing in Putnam County and in Palatka. So I have not only a passionate interest, but I have a financial interest in seeing that we promote this opportunity we have for trails. I worked two years in the governor's office, and in that time created the Florida Bicycle Plan with my friend Herb Hiller, who's a visionary, many of you know Herb, visionary, and sees way ahead into the future for what we can have here. He was the one that's, that initiated the concept, the idea for the St. John's River to see loop trails. And, and when I served on the Office of Greenways and Trails for three years in Tallahassee, and then two years on the foundation, and I was in Tallahassee when the state, Greenways and Trails, Office of Greenways and Trails, supported the initiative for $5 million to be put towards the development of the St. John's River to see trail. That's an investment by the state of Florida for a 260-mile trail, which we are a part of, if we agree to help in the maintenance of the trail in the future. And when I say future, I'm talking about not tomorrow, not next year, maybe not even three years, but down the road. If we can't figure out in this amount of time, an initiative to help to maintain by volunteerism, by Parks and Recreation Department budgets, by different mechanisms that we have through tourist development and economic development, if we can't come up with a plan where we can contribute into a fund to maintain trails and reap the benefits that we will get, because once this is completed, we will have hundreds of miles of trails coming into Putnam County and Palatka, Florida. And if we don't see a way to reap the benefits of that by making a commitment to agree to maintain them, I think we have really sorely missed an opportunity. So I will continue to ask for your, y'all assistance. I have gone to, you know, we did become a trail town, which is one in six in the state of Florida. Palatka is now a trail town. The city of Palatka is stepping up to the plate, putting bike racks in everywhere downtown. It's putting a kiosk of all the maps of the trail system down at the clock tower, that'll go up probably within a month. And they have made a support for seeing us as a trail town. So I think we have an opportunity, and I don't want it getting boiled into a conflict between the different parties. It's a nonpartisan issue. It's a real opportunity that we have to reap the benefits of an investment made by the state of Florida, by National Rails to Trails, by local volunteer organization right here in Putnam County. And I think we can do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Commissioner Turner, do you have a comment?
Is there anybody else going to speak on the Barden Bridge, or can I just go ahead and dive into it? You already had your free minute, Douglas.
All right, all right, nobody else. Douglas, I'm going to give you one minute, okay? I'm going to give you one minute, okay?
A challenge.
The military has mobile bridge units when they're trying to cross through areas. Because this is a, an important factor, we might be able to reach out to Camp Landin and see if we can't borrow one on a temporary basis until we figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Good job, 16 seconds.
That's a world record, ain't it?
All right. Anybody, anybody else want to make public comment? And then after this gentleman, we're going to move on, and I believe Commissioner Turner, I'm going to say a few things. Commissioner Turner wants to address some issues, and Mike Nimitz will also...
Thank you, gentlemen.
State your name and your address.
My name is Michael McMillan, and I, we have lived for 30 years out on Barden Road. And I just wanted to know if, as you have mentioned, the possibility of closing not one, but two bridges on Barden Road, is it possible that there would be a way that you folks would be able to have people who live beyond the bridges toward the north part, and have signs which would allow them to work their way through the roads that go to the, to the east from Barden Road, and eventually would allow them to then get to US 17? Is there any...
You know, like detours, like detour signage?
Detours, right, detour, detour signs which would allow somebody to move across there, might be slow, but...
Probably through the hunting club.
Yeah, yeah, but we don't own the hunting club.
Yeah, I think that was discussed, but I don't think we own that property.
But the roads go through the property, and there's nothing that has ever shown that those roads are private to the point where nobody should go past that point.
If they're, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if they're owned by someone other than the county, they're private enough, we can't allow people to drive through the hunting club without permission and easements. We looked at that, we did.
Have you talked to the hunting club people?
We looked at that, yes, sir. I don't know that anybody went and talked to them yet, because we're trying to come up with a solution that will allow us to leave the bridge open. I'm going to talk about it whenever you're finished, but...
Okay, I, I just wanted to, to find out, if I were coming towards Palatka from my home with the bridge closed, would there be a way that you could put some signs which would allow somebody to work their way over to 17 and then do whatever business they had to do?
We're not looking to close a bridge.
You're not going to close either one of the two bridges?
That's, that's...
If we can, if, okay, we're going to explain that, no, sir, we're not planning on closing a bridge.
We were given to understand that the bridges were going to be rebuilt.
Well, just a minute, I'm going to give it to you to understand, we are not closing them bridges unless DOT makes us. That's why I've been trying to get my turn to speak here before, because we've got so many rumors out on the market that just aren't accurate, like we're going to close the bridge, that's just not accurate.
Well, that's, that's the implication that we had received up to this point.
I understand, where you're getting this from, I don't know, but that's not accurate.
That's from other residents that live on Barden Road.
I'll be glad to give you my business card, and if you get any more of those kind of inaccurate statements, would you call me and let me try to help you back on the righteous path?
I can give you my phone number, and you can call me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, before I turn it over to Commissioner Turner, I want to make everybody in this audience aware that the commissioners, we inherited this problem, we don't want it. It's not the only bridge issue in Putnam County, but we have to deal with it, and we're going to deal with it. And a lot of discussions has already happened. By all means, the gentleman in the back that hauls eggs and, and Mr. Kramer, I make a living off of people like you, so I understand, I'm in the parks business, so I understand that y'all have to operate your businesses, and I understand that citizens have to get back and forth to work, I understand that children have to go to school. We're, we are aware of those concerns. And, and if we could maybe wave a magic wand on this, we would do it, but we can't. But we have done some research, we're going to have a long meeting this afternoon to, to further the conversation of exactly what we can do. But right now, what I'd like to do is start with Commissioner Turner, to hopefully explain some things, and maybe take care of some rumors that, that might be flying around. Commissioner Turner?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the one thing that everybody needs to understand the most, the only way that, that bridge is going to close at this point is if the large trucks that are using it keep, continue to use it and destabilize it to the point to where it can't be used. DOT comes in and says that bridge is condemned, we have no option, other than to go put concrete barriers in front of it. No option. That's not going to happen at this point. Where, where, the design that we're working on at the present time leaves the bridge open. The current one that I'm in favor of is building, as like I told Ernie and, and Dino in my office for this meeting, is to build a, a full-weight bridge right beside the other bridges there now, and then, and then use part of the existing structure to build a second half of the bridge, and then maybe we can get DOT to fund it through a program that they have hypothetically, maybe, or...
No, pretty, pretty...
Okay, but I think they said three weeks for sure, but we're pretty close, and they're going along with us. So if we can get DOT to fund this to the tune of about 4.8 million for that one, and the other bridge out there on 310, then we're so far ahead of this ballgame that it's not funny. That would, the only inconvenience is really going to be, once we get the new bridge done, the new, one half of the new bridge, there'll be full-weight, one-way traffic going back and forth across the bridge that'll be controlled by a red light on each end of the bridge. There's going to be almost a year before that happens. I don't care what magic wand you got, this is the government, and it's frustratingly slow. So, you know, I made a comment to somebody a few weeks ago, that if you, if that was Terry Turner's bridge by Friday of next week, I'd have it where you could drive over it. Because I'd go push some stuff in the creek and put a covert in there and make it best I could, and then say, y'all have at it, which is about what they did back in the eighties, according to Kelly Smith, when he contacted me. That's not an option anymore, especially if we're going to ask DOT to pay for this new bridge. So there's going to be some pain, and the biggest pain is going to be, I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do about it. If, if like Commissioner Pickens said, if I had a magic wand that I could wave, I'd wave it. And I'd get everybody across that bridge starting tomorrow. But any, any of the big trucks that continue to use the bridge, just because they're not being stopped, is really doing a disservice to the, all the residents of Barden, because they're going to destabilize the bridge to the point to where it can't be used, and, and the DOT is going to make us go block it off with concrete barriers. I know it's aggravating now, but it's not as bad as it's going to be if there's no bridge that can be used there at all. So, um, I know, I think I'd also like to say that the, um, there is another way, it's even further, but it's more stabilized than Sun Garden Road, it's a road that goes around through Flora Home. But if you're coming back to town, it's even further out of the way. But most of it's paved, except for a half mile or a mile of it. So maybe, maybe that would be the opportunity to save the eggs, I don't know. But, you know, the, we don't set the weight on the bridge, DOT does. And they do it through a, they do it through a study, and they do it through a calculation that if it's destabilized to a certain point, it can only hold so much weight. And that's where we are on that bridge, DOT set the weight restrictions on that bridge, we didn't. The, um... We, we discussed building a temporary road out to the side of it, where you could get to, to close a bridge, but still have full access. The problem with that is, in our, in Monday of last week, we had a workshop, and our engineers told us that while the bridge span cost $277,000, it was going to cost a million dollars by the time you did your access on each side. So do we spend a million dollars for a road over by the trees, and it take at least a year? I mean, if we worked hard, it'd take a year that nobody's going to help us with funding on? Or do we take that same year and that same amount of money and try to put in a bridge that gets full-weight access that's just slightly over from where we are right now? If we do that, then we're a year ahead of trying to get this thing fixed, instead of spending the first year on a temporary road. There's no really good, solid answer, it's a, it's a year almost any way you look. But at least let's spend the year trying to head in a direction that we haven't just completely wasted what we've done in time and money for that year. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Mr. Harvey.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, then we'll go to Commissioner Rawls.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hit my button off, but I think Commissioner Turner said it well. You know, we all have been working diligently on, on Barden Bridge. And for me to go to Washington with three bullets in my gun, you know, guys, you take the shot when you can take the shot. And that was what we asked for, and we're working on a funding solution now. But rest assured, they shut 310 down twice, DOT did. You can imagine what that did out there with those trucks trying to come through that. And unfortunately, people were on Facebook during the hurricane preparations, saying, we're just driving around these barricades. That is not the right thing to do. We are finding a solution at 2:00 today. I would encourage all you people from Barden, which I, I'm going to tell you, I love Barden, grew up out there, working for Mr. Key out there, and also in the insurance business. And you people deserve a good bridge out there. But there's a lot of issues in this county, and if we can take that funding off another project and put it there, that's a political risk we're going to take, but it's the right thing to do, because we're all county commissioners. And it's, we work for this county, and the bridges are important to us. So right now, two bridges are on the, on the horizon, Barden Bridge and County Road 310. And hopefully, we can make this happen to the benefit, but Commissioner Turner is right. The engineers are saying to us, one year, one year. That's what you're going to see is one year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
So, what we've learned from this process is that communication with the public is imperative. And the communication we're having today, and we've had in the past, needs to happen more often. The county's known about this issue for a while, we just haven't had the means to be able to deal with it. My first knowledge of this problem came in early morning, early morning text message from a constituent wanting to know why kids were being dropped off in her parking lot. So, you know, this is trial by fire for me. You know, me personally, I wasn't aware of it, but I'm aware of it now, and I'm aware that we have 40 of these bridges, or 40 bridges in Putnam County, and there's eight or 10 of them that need attention. Like Commissioner Harvey said, we have to start focusing our efforts and our money at, at what's critical right now. Barden is the most critical, 309 is number two in my estimate, but it's just as. Rice Creek has brought up, Rice Creek Bridge, that, that, that's on my, my concern list, and there's several others that are as well. So we've got very limited resources when it comes to spendability. We have to be very creative, but we also have to do this in a deliberate manner that is not a 10- or 15-year solution, but it's a 50- or 75-year solution. So like Commissioner Turner said, we're going to give you the best, the best bridge that we can give you. And right now, money's really not a factor, it's just where we're going to get the money. So we are looking at all the options. I would highly encourage you to come to the 2:00 meeting today, and I believe we're scheduled for a meeting next Tuesday as well. We had an emergency meeting last Monday. We're willing to meet any, any day of the week, when, when, when information comes available, we're, we're reacting to it. We're not sitting back waiting for the next two-week meeting, two weeks away. What brought us to this issue is they're settling on one piling, that's the, the, the most critical concern on the Barden Bridge. And it, they, the engineer said there was about three inches of settlement. So people are going to have to be respectful and understand the fact that, that the damage has been done, and you can only exacerbate it. So we, we, we are going to have to ask people to be respectful of those, of those weight limits until we can get to a solution. You guys have ideas, I, I've seen people out there talking, as we're talking, they're coming up with ideas on how they can work around. If there's a road that we can get to from Barden Road to Highway 17 that doesn't take out Sun Garden, please come to the 2:00 meeting today, make that, make that presentation, because we're limited, I'm limited in, in the knowledge that I have. And I can tell you right now, my knowledge is very little on bridges. I'm learning as I go, but we do need input from you guys. If you have alternative routes, alternative solutions, please be prepared to bring them to us. I think that's pretty much it. Mr. Allison, I, I, I absolutely sympathize with the position that you're in, and, and I agree. Sun Garden Road is my first concern, and there's two box culverts on Sun Garden Road that I'm concerned about. So we, we do need to do something about that, so... I agree. Right.
Okay, Mr. Allison, come to the podium if you want to.
Yeah, I, I saw that Rice Creek Bridge, and I got video right here, where I couldn't even see the sides of it, and the Barden Bridge. I got video, and anyone who can look at it, come on. But I think with all the people that have businesses out there, you guys spend, or taxpayers spend the money to get one or both, we're going to have to fix both bridges according to Dino. And I'm not an engineer, my brother builds bridges in Palm Beach County, you know, he tells me things. But bottom line is, something could happen again, like at Irma, take that bridge out after we spend millions of dollars building that bridge. We have to have a second, solid way to get in that there's a lot of people live out there. I heard somewhere between, there's about 8,000 to 10,000 people live out towards that Barden Road, top of 100, straight out. That's a lot of people, and plus, there's a lot of businesses out there. So I'm thinking, I'm a pretty smart guy, but if a bridge goes out again, like I got the video of, of Irma, with all the water, take that rascal right out, or both of them out, there has to be another way to get in. I understand, a lot of people have trucks out there, I get it, I hear you, but there's a lot of people that have small, little compact cars. And you try to go down those dirt roads after rain? See ya, you ain't coming back. So I, my opinion is, we need to pave or do something better with that county line road. There has to be a backup on there. Because if you have people right now that are growing up, and they're getting on, running the businesses, I could tell you right now, you got Kramer, you got Scott, you got Jason, you got the Bush family. You got these guys that are going to be coming up now, and they're going to start taking over the businesses, include my kids, if I don't sell first or retire. But anyways, I'm just saying, there has to be a backup, guys, there has to be.
Well, the, the bridge that's being proposed is going to be much more robust than what was in place before.
Right.
So it's not going to be taking, putting the same thing in.
Right.
It's actually going to be wider as well. Some of the things that were considered were the speed limits. If, if we start changing the, the deflection of the road to go across a new bridge, it's going to reduce the speed on the road. These engineers are looking at every, everything they can that's, in, to the advantage of the citizens, not just putting a bridge in, like Mr. Turner said, they could put a bridge in right now, and they could reroute that road. But it's, that's going to create a whole new set of headaches, and it's going to take a lot longer.
Right, and you got two of them, and you can't predict Mother Nature.
Right.
Or an accident, or...
No, we don't have two of them, we got 40 of them.
Well, I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about two on Barden right now.
We've got two on your road, one's of critical concern, which is the one we're having to deal with.
Right.
I understand you want the both, I get it, I surely do, but there's al, there's also 39 others of them in this county that...
I hear you.
Too far behind them.
I hear you.
So, you know, we're all learning a little bit as we go, and we're taking a crash course on it. I believe by Thursday next week, I can build a damn bridge.
I'm going to be staying at a Holiday Express, yeah.
As much time as I've spent on this, so...
My bro, my brother's got a phone call away, he can make a clear span, put it right in there, and get it done in less than a week.
But you have to reroute the road.
And you also have to build the, uh, okay.
Well, that's actually...
And acquire the land, and mitigate the wetlands, and...
Well, I mean, talking, I'm talking about after, literally shut the road down, my brother said, take it on, put it down.
You know, we've gone through that, I mean, the first thing we did was try to get a, a span bridge.
Yep.
But by the time we, $277,000, they can build it, have it here within 60, 90 days, whatever it was, but it's going to take the better part of... days, whatever it was, but it's gonna take the better part of a year to realign the road and build the access to the part of the bridge that it crossed.
I believe it.
And it's gonna cost a million dollars.
Yep, yep.
So, why do we spend a million dollars to build a temporary road over to the side?
Right.
Have to buy land, have to, to mitigate the wetlands, have to move the power lines, have to do all that, and you're still haven't addressed the bridge.
That's correct. And that's why I'm suggesting...
Takes the time, build the bridge, build a one-lane bridge. Yeah, it'll be full-weight, one-lane bridge with traffic access.
Right.
And then have it in place and build the other side and DOT it pay for.
I know, and we, and that's what I'm saying. We have to look at what Mr. Rawls said. We have to look at this not five years down or ten, we have to look at it at fifty to seventy-five, maybe a hundred years. So, what I am saying, and of course, I'll come back at two o'clock, 'cause, you know, my mouth wanders here pretty good. But I'm saying is that if we have another, we only fix one bridge, we have Rice Creek Bridge, we have whatever can happen, we have to have a solid foundation going back into Barden. We have to. And I, I'm, I hate to say this, but I'm leaning to you guys fixing that county line or Sun Garden Road, or whatever you wanna call it.
That might, that might very well be a viable solution.
Because there's another gentleman up here...
They've been in Michael address that. I think they've been in contact with, with Clay County already, so we've looked at a lot of things.
All the land, yeah.
And then, I'm just saying, there's another, you know, another guy was saying the same thing, uh, you know, trying to find some way back behind some, some of these farm and hunting club roads that, that ain't gonna happen.
Yeah.
It's not. It's not. It's not. I mean, there's tribal, there's tribal wars going on back there from what I seen.
It's hunting season.
But, no, I'm just, my opinion, guys, um, now, you guys are smarter than me, but, uh, I've been, you know, been paying taxes. I pay taxes as much as the Walmart does in this county. But what I'm saying is, I think that we need to look at county road, and you guys can be able to take the time, get the bridge done, let minimal traffic go through there, and have a, 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 a Millings Road or a paved road coming. We need it anyways. I've been here twenty-three years in February, and one of those roads should've been done for backup a long time ago. So, I'm just saying, maybe it's cheaper to do that and then focus on fixing the bridges correctly, both bridges.
I'd just like to say one more thing, and I'll relinquish the floor here. This is exciting. This is the, the most robust conversation I've ever been had in here in the past eleven months, and I really enjoy this. I think that this is how government works.
Thank you.
We are the government, and we're in here working together to, to solve a common, a common problem, having a common solution.
That's fine.
So, I, I just wanna thank everybody for coming in here today and, and, um, uh, being part of this, 'cause this really is exciting times for Putnam County.
Now, this, this affects business.
Okay, thank you, Allison. We're gonna, um, Commissioner Goddard has some comments.
I think before he came up, Mr. Kramer had his hand raised out in the audience.
All right, Mr. Kramer. And then Liotta.
Thank you, sir. I know most of all you guys, and I know y'all working hard on this thing. I met with Terry a little while before the meeting started, and, you know, these seem like one of these problems that only Solomon can solve, to me. But, you know, we, the problem we're running into is, this is becoming an immediate, really quick problem. No time to try to get out and figure out what to do or where to go. For example, if we start sending those heavy trucks out the other way north today, you got a problem tomorrow fixing road out there. Fact is, uh, if you go down the county line road going west, you, uh, some places, it's not even wide enough for two cars to pass, much less a big truck and something else. So, there's an immediate problem for you, and there's gonna be a lot of money poured in those roads getting out of there, too, so... Again, I mean, you got heavy loads coming in and out, and I agree with what Troy had to say as far as the amount of money you're gonna have to put in that road coming out of there. And then, again, you're strapped with another problem with another bridge almost immediately. I mean, it's the same exact problem that we got with the first bridge. So, I don't know where we're going with all this stuff, too, but we're gonna start sending our trucks out of the other way in the morning and be calling you, try to get some, get out of there with heavy equipment, all this stuff out there. The other thing I thought about was the fact that one problem that is really a dangerous problem is the fact that the fire truck, if you have a fire out there, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about a forest fire. They're calling for a dry, cold winter, and who knows what it's gonna be? But if you have one out there, it's gonna take a while for heavy equipment to get to you, get out of there. It could burn half a bar down before you get there. So, again, we got a lot of problems to look at, and I know y'all are turning over every, every stone trying to figure out what to do, and that's great, and I appreciate that, too. But we need help, too. The second part of the problem is just the trucks is one thing, and the traffic is another one, going out of there and fixing the road, but there's also a huge financial problem going out the other way. I'm sure that Troy has already got all of his business taken care of for the year, and his deals have been made on feeding this, that, next thing, but if every extra mile they put on costs us about four dollars or more coming out of there. You know, it takes an hour to go around. And with a big truck even more than that, if, you know, an hour coming, an hour going back, you know, and one day that's two hours, and a week that's fourteen hours, that's like driving from here to Virginia every week. So, there's a big deal there. And it's just talking about one truck or one day, you're talking about a lot of stuff coming out of there. And I'm just wondering how much traffic you could take out of there west, too. So, lot, lot to think about, and I appreciate how y'all are working on this stuff, too, though.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And I'll go to you next, buddy. Ms. Liotta.
Good morning, gentlemen. I know you guys are working hard on this, and you've heard from a lot of our constituents. Um, I just have two questions. Um, I know you guys mentioned that the bridge has settled three inches, so the question that I would have as a citizen is, how long has that taken? Is that at three inches in the last four months, or is that three inches in the last thirty years?
I don't know.
Because I think that's a question that needs to be answered, because the point that I'm trying to say is, if it's three inches in the last, you know, little bit, then obviously you got a bigger problem. But if it's taken the sixty years that it's been built to reduce three inches, I think that's a different situation.
I don't think that's the case, Liotta.
Okay.
And the reason I'm saying that is, I think the destabilization of that bridge is when we lost all, when we started getting the scouring, which basically started at Hurricane Irma.
Okay. Well, that makes sense.
So, it did a lot of the, a lot of this damage has been done in the last two years from the, not only the scouring, but the scalding of the pilings. If you look at the bottom of that bridge, there's a lot of the concrete starting to be gone around the bottom of the pilings. So, I don't think it's, I, I don't think it, according to the engineer and what he said last Monday, up until that point, I was thinking about other ways to fix the existing bridge until he told me it's completely destabilized, and that's not an option.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't know what else to do other than to do the quickest, simplest, fastest, cheapest thing that we could do to try and build that bridge and get it back up and running again. That's all I know to do.
Yeah, and I think it's important that everybody hears that. In addition, I just wanted to, you to say again that when, and if you choose your option that you mentioned, and you put it down to one lane, that would be a fully functional...
Fully functional, full-weight bridge.
Full-weight bridge.
It'll just be one lane at a time with a traffic light on each side of the bridge, which is the only thing I got quoted on in the paper last week was that out of everything that I said in that meeting was Barden's gonna have their first red light.
Right.
So, but basically, it's a, it's a red light on each end of this bridge, and it'll let one lane of traffic through at the time. And I'm sure the engineers addressed another issue that especially during the, the time of the construction of the single bridge, there's gonna be some traffic control that's gonna have to be done during the day. When they drive piles for this new bridge, they cannot let people drive on that old bridge, because it could destabilize the bridge to the point where it could cave in with a car on top of it. So, they're probably gonna like, let you drive pilings for an hour, and I'm not saying this is exact, but this is what my suggestion would be, is don't drive pilings at all from seven in the morning till nine, and nine or something, and let's everybody get back and forth, and the kids go to school. It may be six-thirty, I don't know, but let everybody get in and out of there, and the kids go to school and what have you. And then, drive pilings for an hour, and then stop, and then let the people drive back and forth across the bridge for a few minutes, and then stop it back up and drive pilings for another hour. At least then, you're, you know, you know, you'll kinda know what the schedule is and what have you. Uh, it may be that they get to a point they have to stop driving pilings, and they let them through in thirty minutes. I don't know, but, you know, maybe we could say that no more than an hour can you drive pilings without letting people cross the bridge. Um, you know, so there's gonna be some traffic control involved in it, but my hope is we can keep the bridge open, because if it destabilizes, like I said earlier, if it destabilizes to the point, it's not gonna be this commission's, um, decision.
I understand, yes.
DOT's gonna say condemned, it's over, you put a, you put a concrete, um, in front of it, or I'm gonna put concrete in front of it. And that's kinda like, you know, I used to make comments, and you've heard me say it before, about, well, the barricade police is gonna show up or something. Well, they did show up, the sign police, when I, uh, when I said that about DOT one time. Go ahead and put the sign up. If they show up, we'll deal with it. I don't believe they got sign police. I was wrong. They got sign police, and they, and if they tell us to come in here and, and block off this bridge, if we don't block it off, they'll block it off. So, that's why I'm hoping, we need to keep this bridge as stable as we possibly can, even to the point of adding riprap to the, around the bottoms of it to help keep it stable until such time as we can get the new bridge built.
I, thank you, and I appreciate you clearing that up. The other question I, well, the other comment I would make is, um, the communication with the constituents in that area, if we do have to have periods of shutdown for driving the pilings, then I would say that's imperative, and we would need to set up something where they would know what hours it would be shut down. So, just keep that in mind, you know, as you're going forward, that we have some method of communicating with the citizens.
Liotta, you guys have that, um, the Facebook presence that a lot of people listen to. Maybe, um, somebody from the county could be responsible for communicating with whoever handles that.
Yeah, when we get to that point, we definitely, I'm just saying, we need to have a plan, because somebody coming off of night shift needs to know if they need to go around or not.
I'm sure we could put a digital bulletin board up that, that says what we have coming up as well.
Something, we just need to have something.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. That, that, and communication's gonna be imperative from this point forward. Um, you know, I, I encourage Barden to formalize a group, and I, I still am in favor of having quarterly meetings with you guys. Call them Tal Hall meetings, call them Jack and Jawa Jeff, whatever you wanna call it. But, um, I, I think it's very important, uh, that we, that we communicate going forward.
I think we'd like to have buds with Buddy.
There you go.
Budweisers, just...
Oh, I was thinking something different, but okay. It's not legalized yet, but...
No, seriously. Um, the other comment I wanted to make is speed limit. Uh, the bridge is already at thirty-five miles an hour on the bridge. I know that the engineer had said something about forty-five miles an hour. That bridge is already, I believe, at thirty-five miles an hour. So, just so you'll know.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Liotta. Commissioner Goddard, then we'll go to Commissioner Harvey, and then we'll have Mike Nimitz.
Okay, most everything has already been said, but I wanted to get back to Mr. Bush. We did not set the weight limit on that bridge. Uh, the Department of Transportation basically hit us with that on a Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, and we had, we have to follow that, whether we agreed with it.
You can't drive duly, bro.
Yes, sir. We understand. Well, that took away our buses, that took away a whole lot of things. But understand, there was a timeline.
About engineer, like, go over here.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I, I agree with you, but the point is, when the Department of Transportation tells us, we, we have to adhere to it, that's just no way around it. But I wanted to give you a little bit of timeline. There are forty bridges that they have some concern on, okay? Those two, which is 310 and Barden, were their highest concern. And they were supposed to meet with us, uh, first part of the year, I think it was around February. Unfortunately, they had flooding out in the Steen Hatch area, and they didn't make it. They finally ended up meeting with us on August 12th, if I'm not mistaken, at 310, supposedly gonna meet with us and then go to Barden. Unfortunately, they were pressed for time, and they were gonna meet with us in three weeks. Three weeks, that was on the 12th. They were gonna meet with us in three weeks and go over conditions on that bridge. That Thursday is when they hit us that they're taking the level down, and we had no choice. And I know it, it looks like we did that, but we did not.
I didn't think, no, I just think...
Mr. Bush, will you, Mr. Bush, will you come forward? So, this is being taped, so will you come forward if you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, come on up.
You're on TV.
Hello, Lordy. But, uh, no, I, I just, my experience, I'm an old man, I've been around, and, you know, like, say lawyers, engineers, I don't care who you are, county commissioners, everyone of y'all got a different opinion on the same thing.
Right.
And they grab a number out of their ass, excuse my language, and pick it out. Do they do that, or they get a group of thirty of them talking about it and use common sense? Or they just grab a number, C-Y-O-A? And I think that's what they have done, in my opinion, to drop it down to a duly can't go across that road legally. You know, if you set up the DOT, eighty percent of the people in Barden gonna get arrested.
Mr. Bush, they actually hired an outside independent engineering firm that, that was not Department of Transportation.
Right, and Mike, Mike's gonna address that in just a few minutes. I wanna go to...
I'm just, I'm sorry.
Buddy, you got more comments?
Yes, I was just gonna continue on that. We have looked extensively for never, ever, ever shutting that bridge down.
Yeah.
Get back to Sun Garden. We've been working on Sun Garden off and on for about three years, trying to get it done. It is very costly, and it's not that we own, we don't, if we owned Sun Garden Road, it would be easier. We don't. Half of that's owned by Clay County, is, there's just so many issues out there, but we've all addressed it. I think everybody up here has addressed the, the need for that, that road to be open, not just because of this bridge, but in the case of evacuation or in the ba, uh, case of a horrible accident happening at that bridge, you shut off the other end of the, the, uh, community. So, we've been looking at this, and then when it came to, uh, you know, other ways out, we've looked at that also. We don't own those roads, so we cannot tell you to go down those roads. You can go down that road, but we cannot tell you, you can go down that road. Only the roads that we own.
I just go, everybody get tickets going down there, you know, people driving duly trucks. If you have three or four people, as fat as I am, you got a ticket. You know?
Well...
That's what I'm concerned about.
I, and, and I've talked to the Sheriff's Department. I, and, and I've talked to the Sheriff's Department, it's just gonna be, that would be such a, a problem to try and enforce, that it, it's, it's just not there. Unfortunately, no matter which way we looked, I mean, we've, we've looked at countless different, uh, alternatives. You're still a year, no matter which way we look at it. This is a year that we're gonna have to deal with this thing. So that's why we encourage you to be at the two o'clock meeting. We got another one on Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. And we'll have another meeting, we're, this isn't over yet. We're looking at every option we can to make the best cost worth, and, you know, to make it where, you know, it's not, uh, in, you know, impacting what you, your, your day-to-day life out there. But as far as like the school buses, that's gonna be a year. I, I don't see any way out of that, it's just gonna happen. But be at those meetings, let's hear your, you know, your input, because we are honestly trying to do everything we can to make it efficient, and, you know, without impacting that community out there.
Oh, I appreciate it, yeah, just letting you know that just, you know, I don't wanna see handing tickets out, everybody drives up and down the road.
All right, we're gonna wind this up. Commissioner Harvey and then Dino, if you'll come and stand on deck.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do, I do wanna make something clear, and Commissioner Turner really did a great job of explaining what was gonna take place. But what I heard the engineers say last week also was when they drive the piles, they're gonna stop and they're gonna inspect the bridge, okay? To make sure it's stable enough for cars to go back. It's just not gonna be, okay, we drove this one down, now we're gonna open it back up. There's, there could be some changes that took place, and, uh, but what we did here, what I did here, I'm learning a lot about bridges too. I get accused of going to YouTube University and watching all the Youtubes. But when you put a piling down, it kinda forces some of the other surrounding dirt underneath it up. So there, there was some good things that came out of this, and we learned. I would encourage you, Mr. Kramer, thank you very much for offering to go a different route. And Leota, you and I both know, they don't go thirty-five miles an hour across that bridge. They're flying across that bridge, stand out there and watch them. So, anything the community can do to really realize that it's your bridge, and you gotta take care of it right now, because you don't want what happened on Three Ten twice, where they shut that down. And that was, that could be detrimental to you. So the more y'all can be slow, the more y'all can be careful, the more you can go out the other way if you can. And Mister Allison, we'll start looking at that. We've been looking at Sun Garden and Bellamy Road to get people out. We have been looking at that, but the more you can police yourself out there, the better off we are right now. Because again, you've heard today, you're looking at one year, one year. And that's, we've looked at every other option, and again, today, we're gonna talk about it. So, thank you, Mister Chairman, for the ability to make the comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dino.
Thank you again for letting me speak. My biggest concern, which I'm comfortable with, what you're doing with the, um, uh, Etoneer Creek Bridge. The biggest concern I have is the second bridge, Rice Creek, which is just as bad as the first bridge, which tells me by next year, that's gonna be shut down too. And you know it, everybody knows it, we're, we've got to agree with this, that we're not looking at one years, we're looking at a few years, because we got one after the other that's gonna be shut down.
I can tell you, just, this commissioner is looking at our immediate issue, and then looking down the road at the other bridges, so we're not, we're not ignoring it.
All right.
We need to address both of these, 'cause we're back to back, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna address it now. Please, either ask to be recognized or ring on this new damn machine in here where I can see it, okay? All right, Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, last week also, I did request an inventory from DOT about all the bridges that we have in the county, and what status they're in, so we can get ahead of this situation if possible. Again, it's money, and we could span that whole area, but it's money. Everything's money, and don't, don't, you've heard it today, you sat in here and listened, money, money, money. We're trying our best. So, but we get that inventory, we'll be able to rank those bridges to see which ones are the next ones coming up, and we'll know what we're going to deal with in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, and everybody needs to keep in mind, today's fire or dragging the sleigh is, uh, is these bridges. But we've got, we've got about a dozen dirt road, or paved roads in Putnam County. If we don't resurface them for long, we're gonna lose them. So, that's just as important, losing a, a current paved road is just as important as a bridge, except this one is one way in, one way out, so it's today's fire. There's always gonna be a fire to put out at the county commission. That's the one thing I've learned in the last couple of years. Some of them are small as a match, some of them are big as a bomb, like this one. But there are always gonna be something that we've got to do. So, part of the thing we've got to do when we sit in this seat up here is to make sure that we give the limited resources we have to the right projects, and this is one, okay? So, yes, in a few years, we got some more bridges, thirty-nine or forty more of them around the county that are gonna go bad. Does that mean we stop paving any roads, or resurfacing any roads, or doing any of that to save the bridges right now? Or do we try to do it as we have to and move forward? So I wish we'd have known about this one quicker, the Ettenir Bridge, 'cause I'd have sure voted to do something when it wasn't an emergency, I would've. But, and I understand that the Rice Creek is just as bad, but there's thirty-nine more. We can't fund them either, Dino. So, you know, I, I wish we had a better answer, but that's the way it is, we have limited resources. Thank goodness DOT is probably gonna fund these two bridges, or it would've busted us. So, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
Uh, the forty bridges we have, not all of them are critical, just, I just wanna make that clear. We're, we're probably looking at, at less than eight, um, maybe even less than seven, including these two. So, uh, it's, Mister Newman's shaking his head, yes, we're, um, we do have an inventory of bridges. We have a, a health index that we can look at, and they're not all under eighty-five percent. But, um, personally, I'm glad we're having this conversation now. It, it, it sure is a shame that it had to be this particular bridge, because this is probably the worst-case scenario for us. But, we had to start somewhere, so, uh, we will work through this, I promise you. You will be happy with the resolution, and you will be involved in the process all the way through.
Okay, Mike, you wanna make some comments before we move on to the consent agenda?
Thank you, Commissioner, just a, a couple of brief comments here. Again, FDOT, uh, their engineers and their consultant engineers, they establish the weight limits, okay? Our consultant also reviewed their findings and verified that their findings were accurate, okay? So there have been multiple engineers or entities, engineering entities who have looked at this. Also, Sun Garden Road, uh, we have been working with Clay County. We have actually ridden the entire road with our county administrator, our county administrator as well. We looked at the conditions out there, we've worked out arrangements to where we can increase the maintenance out there, to make it more passable. Now, there's a lot of challenges with this road. I would like to think that, yeah, it would be great if we could go out there and pave it, or fix it, or do what we need to do, but there's multiple challenges, one of them being it's prescriptive right away, the majority of it's prescriptive. So, some of the areas where it gets narrow, we just can't go out there and clear cut it and clear it out. It's prescriptive. We'll have to get, you know, either, uh, cooperation with the landowners to widen the road, uh, so that's, that's another challenge with that. And the last time we looked at this road, actually about paving the entire road, the figure came out to twenty-seven million. So it's not a small venture here. So, those are all hurdles or, or mountains we're gonna have to, uh, overcome in this process. But we are looking at the alternate access, we're gonna do everything we can to establish that and maintain that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We're gonna take a three-minute and eight-second break. This time, and we will move, and we thank everybody for all of their input. We'll move down to the consent agenda, um, Commissioners, and we have an addendum, which is, uh, six P, um, the unanticipated revenue appropriations from, um, Sheriff's Department. So Commissioners, are there any items that you wish to pull? And I'll start to my far left with Commissioner Harvey.
Mister Chairman, I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have one, uh, just, I have one question about E, item E.
Okay, and I have none.
Mister Chairman?
But I do believe that, um, uh... Matt? Matt needs to make a comment on, and maybe Stacey Papel on six P before we move forward.
Six what?
P.
So you need to pull P?
Do we need to pull it?
Just to discuss briefly, um, because there needs to be an addition to the motion on that, that particular item.
Okay, all right, so I'll pull six P.
Mister Chairman?
We'll entertain a motion to accept the rest of them.
I'd like to make a motion to accept A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a proper motion on the floor by Commissioner Harvey, and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, okay, but saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we'll move to item E, Commissioner Rawls.
Um, I just had a question, uh, as relates to Jones-Evan continuing contract. How long has that contract been in place, and how, it's a continuing services contract, so how long, um, will that be going on?
Commissioner, this is just for this year.
Okay.
Um, so, every year, they give us, um, a, a new budget for the year and the services that they provide. Um, and anytime we could go out to bid, um, with another, like, before next year, if we wanted to, we could go out and bid and redo these services, or have another, uh, company look at doing these services. So these are just our continuing consulting, make sure that we're in compliance with our day-to-day. The, the reason there was a misunderstanding on my point, on my part, the reason these weren't on the last agenda where we did, the, the last one was just for groundwater monitoring. This was all the other services, there's like seven different sets of services in here, but because there were one company, my understanding is I was correct, one company, and they all added up to over the fifty thousand, that's why we had to bring them back in front of the board.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
How, the, the continuing services contract they have, how long is that in place for?
I do not know.
Okay.
I'll have to, I can, I can look that up, but I do not know at this time.
It's current, I just didn't know, so that, that's all I had.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of this board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner, um, Rawls, and a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose sign, item E passes. Okay, item P, Mister Reynolds?
Yes, sir, on, on this agenda item, um, it originally said that the budget resolution is attached, but there was not a budget resolution attached, so the easiest way to, to address this one would just be to have the commission approve, um, and Mrs. Papel wrote it at the bottom where it may come from contingency. Just, the board, uh, make a motion that they approve this with, uh, a budget, um, transfer coming from contingency, and then a budget resolution, sorry, budget resolution can be done, um, in the near future when the funds are returned, and we can add it back to contingency.
I'm confused, okay?
He, what he's, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mister Chairman?
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, I'm, help me out again, 'cause the front page of that only has the number of eight thousand fifty-two and, and five fifty-two.
Well, that, that's amounts that are included, if you look in the top right, the total amount.
Okay, eight eighty-seven?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chairman?
Okay.
I'd like a law for motion to, uh, approve item six P as written for eight hundred eighty-seven thousand three seventy-one for an anticipated rev, revenue increase for the Sheriff's Department. Second.
Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Does that meet what you're looking for?
And was that motion to come from contingency?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we got that? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, okay, but saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda is over. Uh, we'll move down to item seven, um, standing in for Mister Tim Smith, Mister Kenny Downs, how are you?
I'm doing well today. We're, we're in good shape today, y'all have had a, y'all have had an awful lot of discussion.
Oh, thank you, Mike's on, mashed the button, let, there you go.
I'm sorry, I thought that was on. Uh, y'all have had a lot of discussion today, so I think we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you, Mister Downs. And, uh, we'll move down to appointments, um, starting with Commissioner Rawls.
Um...
We're gonna handle the TDC separate.
Okay, um, I have no new appointments, I'm actually working on one for the, uh, Contractor Trades Examining Board, but I have nothing right now.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Okay. All right, moving down to, um, item eight, uh, the Tourism Development Council. Looks like we have, uh, three interested individuals. Two of them are already serving on the TDC. Miss Teresa Miller, who I believe, uh, is the only one, um, that is applied, that she's currently on the TDC. She wants to continue serving on the TDC, and she qualifies for the hospitality, I believe, classification, and no other applicant. So what I would prefer is the, the board entertain, uh, the chairman to entertain a motion to, um, renominate Miss Teresa Miller, uh, for the TDC.
So moved.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey?
I'll second.
And got a second by Commissioner Goddard. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, how long has Miss Miller been serving?
Danny, you have any idea?
Four years, will expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
She's been serving a number of years.
She's probably been serving around fifteen to seventeen years. Is she, her old accommodations?
Uh, I guess one question I have is, how are we marketing these positions, um, when they, when they come available? 'Cause I know we've got, uh, several new bed and breakfasts in town. Is there, you know, I'm, I'm not aware of any, anything being put out. I wasn't aware of any until it hit our agenda last week, but, uh, our last meeting. But, uh, it was just a question, if anybody has an answer.
Okay, Danny, do you wanna address that, or is it?
I'd like to, Mister Chairman.
Okay, the way you're coming up, Commissioner Turner?
I know where we're trying to go with this again, we're trying to go into term limits on committees. That is the most asinine thing that we've ever discussed around here, because on ninety-nine percent of it, we're hunting people to sit on these committees, hunting them. And so now we're gonna kick somebody off because we have somebody else that wants to come on a committee? Come on, guys, in the reality of this, we go out and recruit people to sit on these committees, work hard at it every day, trying to get people to sit on these committees. The only way it should be, the only way someone should be removed from a committee if they're not doing their job, or they're not showing up for that committee, or they don't wanna serve any longer. That's the only time that somebody should be considered. If they're not doing a good job, let the chairman come and ask them to be removed. We put that in not too long ago. When the, when the committees ask somebody to recommend somebody, to nominate somebody else, that that's who they recommend, that's usually who works the hardest for the board, and who the committee wants for the board. It's like the fair committee. When this commissioner has a, a fair board, or, or a member open, uh, that needs to be appointed, I go to the, 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 uh, leadership of the fair board and ask for recommendations from them on who they would like to work with to make this board go further. And this is no different right here. I mean, I understand, and I, I don't wanna make this about personalities, because I appreciate the fact that we have people wanting to serve on these boards, two for the same seat. But it shouldn't be a competition. I think there's gonna be another, another, um, another, um, membership of the board come up, open before long. I think there's gonna be. And if there is, if she fits in that category, then I'd be first in line to nominate her to be in that category. But to remove a member because somebody else wants to serve a just, I'm sorry, guys, I can't get there, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
If I could, put in here, 'cause I, I, sitting here between a couple guys, the, uh, I'm, I'm totally for term limits on an elected position. I believe term limits are, are necessity that needs to be in on elected positions. However, a volunteered position, I, I, I've seen it in the churches, I've seen it in here, and as, as Commissioner Turner was saying, sometimes trying to get somebody on one of these boards is almost impossible. So, when you have a volunteer who's doing a fantastic job, uh, replacing them just does not make sense. And I grant you, you are great, but Mister Hodge, everyone talks so highly of him, and what he does, I'd, I'd have a hard time replacing him myself, so...
We're gonna vote on that one second.
Yeah, that's not...
I'm just saying, Teresa Miller.
I, I can see both sides, but, yeah, I, I...
Evidently, Mister Chairman, there's no contention on Miss Miller. Could we go on and vote on her, or do whatever we need to do?
Do you have a comment on Mrs. Miller?
No, sir.
Okay, Danny, did you wanna make a comment? I, I don't know that we need it, okay, all right, okay.
So, my, my, my question was never answered, did we advertise that position? Or was it just held within the TDC, and then it's coming to us now because somebody...
I don't know, Mister, uh, Commissioner Rawls, I don't know if we advertise any position as a vacancy on any of the committees. But if that, if you wanna do that, that could be a conversation that we could have, but I don't know that it's a necessity to advertise that at this point.
I was just wondering if it wouldn't be prudent for us to take a step back from, from this particular one and, um, poll some of the other folks that meet that category and see if there might be other interested individuals.
That would be only if I wasn't willing to put Miss Teresa Miller on there, that I don't think you could get a finer person to be on that committee than her anywhere.
I don't know her from Adam's house cat.
I understand, so you'd slap her in the face 'cause you don't know her.
Not a minute, not a minute slapping her, but if, you know, if she's been on there for seventeen years, um, you know, I, I'm, I just believe that in order for this county to change, we need to change the way we do business and the people we do business, uh, with, so it might be an opportunity for change, that's all. I don't, and, and she may absolutely be the best candidate, bar none, but without actually stepping out and looking into that, we won't ever know. Though I think we owe to our citizens to do it.
I request that we vote on this, please.
Call the question, we get a, we got a motion in a second? We do have that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, and it kept saying, let's do a roll call vote, um, if you would, by district? Yes.
I'll abstain.
Can't abstain, can't.
I say yes to Teresa Miller.
Yes.
Yes.
If I can't abstain, my vote is no, I'm not prepared to make a decision based on no information.
Okay.
Commissioner Rawls, you, you have to vote.
I just said if, if I, if I cannot abstain, my vote would be no, because I don't have enough information to cast a vote.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, it passes four to one with Commissioner Rawls dissenting. Okay, we'll move on to, um, the next appointment, and we have John Hodge, who has served on the TDC for twenty-seven years evidently, is what was brought up today. And he wishes to continue his service, and he was nominated by the TCC board. And we also, if you see, we have the application for Miss Andrea Conover to be considered also.
Mister Chairman?
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, last week, I kinda caused a little uproar by sending an email out. In the email, there was no room for no members on it, because our committee book said that we were full. There was nine members on, including Dana and Julie. That has since changed, Laura has changed that from two days ago, or yesterday. But you and Julie, I mean Dana, I'm referring to you, I'm sorry. Uh, Dana and Julie are not members of the TDC, but in our book, it said they were. So that's why I was going, guys, we got, the statute says nine people, we got nine slots filled. Why do we, have we, I couldn't understand why we even had any openings. Why do we, have we, I couldn't understand why we even had any openings. So that's the case. I did get awoken this morning at 4:30 in the morning, going, I should have done something. I talked to, I sent this email out to Laura today. Kelly Redford has resigned from the TDC and from the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council. He contacted me last week, but I was in DC. Thought I forwarded that out, but at 4:30 this morning, when I woke, I went, I never forwarded that out. And I talked to you about it, but I was in, I didn't tell you any details. But I didn't do anything more. We got busy that day, and it completely flipped my mind. So, but Kelly's in the hospitality thing. And I've spoken to our attorney this morning. And I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, I'll let him do that, if he wants to speak about it. But there, I think there needs to be some cleaning up that needs to take place on these, on these boards. Because I do believe that we do have a right to change people whenever we need to change people. Does everybody need to be changed? No. But I do believe it's up to the commissioners at that time to make any changes that they feel. Attorney, do you want to step in on what we talked about this morning?
Yeah, I can, I can comment on that. The, my, I wouldn't say my concerns, but in reviewing the, both the ordinance and the statute governing the TDC, first of all, obviously, it is, you know, the appointments are clearly within the discretion of the board to appoint whoever they wish to appoint. That really isn't the issue. However, there, both with regard to the statute and the ordinance, there's certain criteria that the respective members need to meet. All of them have to be electors, okay, for starters. We do have that on our application. Additionally, as has been discussed here, there are certain positions that are open to particular people by virtue of their, their business interests, whether it's the accommodations industry or not, people involved. Plus, obviously, the ex officio members for the municipalities and the chair of the county commission. I really believe that it is essential that whoever is going to be considered by the board, submit an application so that those, that criteria is clear in the application. So that we know, one, that they are currently an elector of the county. It might seem like a formality, but it is a criteria of both the statute and our ordinance. And that, and this is something that we will deal with internally with regard to the posting on the website. I think it's extremely important that when we identify a particular member of the board, that we identify what capacity they're serving in as either, you know, their official capacity with regard to an elected official, or if they are going to be one of the three individuals on the board that represent hospitality industry. They should be identified as such, not just at large. And for the other three spots, should also be identified as, you know, tourism, but non-accommodation member. So that it's very clear. And then, we already do, actually, on the site, show the expiration dates for those terms. But it'd be very, I think it'd be very, very helpful from a practical standpoint, to be able to identify, you know, what capacity they're serving in, what the, anybody considering those positions, what their, you know, their qualifications would need to be. And of course, they all have to be electors of the county.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we take the recommendation of the Tourist Development Council and appoint, and reappoint John Hodge to the TDC.
Have we got a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We've got a second by Commissioner Goddard. We'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion? Commissioner Rawls?
I think in light of what our attorney just told us, we really should take a step back from this. Mr. Hodge, is he here right now?
No.
Is not here to answer questions? And we don't, we don't have the pertinent details. I don't know, what does he represent? Does he have a restaurant? Does he have a hotel? What, what does he represent?
He has a business.
Does that qualify him to represent the TDC?
He has a business.
His degree in art sure, sure does the cultural side of it.
I don't think that's one of the qualifying standards.
I believe it is, too.
A degree? I don't think a degree does.
No, not a degree. I said, but there's a cultural representative on that board, I think.
I think, I think it says you have to have three people from hospitality and three from hotels. If I'm going from memory, I can get, I got it set on my desk. You guys want me to go grab it real quick?
Well, I guess if you win this vote, that's what we'll take on next.
I'm not looking to win or lose anything, it's just a matter of prudence.
What's next, vote on it.
What the ordinance says. I don't have any information on the gentleman in front of me.
Okay. I think the information on the gentleman before us is 27 years dedicated to the TDC. Probably a 50-year business owner, signs, art. I'm just gonna go ahead and say, does this probably need to be worked on? Maybe it does. But I spoke with Ms. Conover. She set up a meeting with me, and I enjoyed the 30, 40 minutes that we had of conversation. I learned a lot about you. I know your heart's in the right place. You definitely have the qualifications to fill this position, okay? There will be other positions that will come open, and hopefully you will get one of those. But as I told you the other day, I saw no reason for this commissioner to remove somebody that has dedicated 27 years to the community on the TDC, was one of the first ones that was with the chamber, with Wes Larson, for tourist development in Putnam County. That's his credentials. Put aside that I do know him, done a little business with him. But this commissioner cannot remove somebody, especially, as I chaired the TDC this year, and I saw him at the meetings 10 minutes early, prepared, participated, and was very productive. I can't do that. So those are my comments, and I will call the question. We'll do a roll call vote? Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Chairman.
All right, what was, what the vote was?
Yes, he, John Hodge is in.
Good, is it 5-0? Okay.
I voted no.
That's what I figured, four to one, okay. All right, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I do think that there needs to be some cleaning up, because the statute is kind of very blunt, if you will. And I think that the attorney has made the case that participation forms should be filled out on the reappointments. Because it does, this is the only one that says you have to be a voter. And we don't really go out and go, okay, prove you're a voter. So I think we gotta do what Ms. Conover did and fill out a thing. And there's a question there, are you a registered voter? Maybe that question needs to say, are you a registered voter in Putnam County? But there is three hospitality, three non-hospitality. Has nothing to do with anything else. Make it very, and it does have to do with the three hospitalities have to pay the tourist development tax. That's in statute. So I do think going into the future, we gotta clean this up a little bit. Because now that we know, we know what we know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I do think moving forward, if we are gonna have, I assume we're gonna have each person sitting on an advisory board to fill one of these applications out. Need to make it as simple and as easy as possible, because I sure don't want to offend somebody that has been on one of these boards, that pay little, or most of them pay nothing. Offend them by saying, I've been on it for five years, why have I got to do this now? So we need to make it as easy as possible, okay?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Another thing is, like I said earlier, we've got two that wants this seat. This is the first time this has happened since the short time I've been here, and probably as long before that. Because that's not usually what takes place. What usually takes, so what we're gonna do, we go in, we make somebody that's done a good job, five, 10, 27 years, whatever it is. And we say, okay, now you got to jump through all these hoops, get back on your volunteer board, that you've volunteered your time. The key word, volunteered your time for all these years to serve on. And if you don't fill out a piece of paper, we're gonna kick you off. And then we don't have anybody else to fill the spot. Now, so yeah, I'm into cleaning stuff up, I am. Don't misunderstand me. But let's make this thing as easy as we can here, too. If we need a questionnaire for certain things, like the voter or the meat statute, then go to whoever it is, John Smith, and say, here, Mr. Smith, you're gonna at least have to fill out this thing that answers these pertinent questions to the, to the statute itself.
That's right.
So yeah, I'm okay with that. Just don't want to make this thing so ominous that we run all the good citizens that are serving on our board now off.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
So I think we missed an opportunity here today to actually look at the ordinance and what it states. It doesn't say three others. It says three others who are involved in the tourist industry. And I've, again, there's been nothing presented before me that shows that Mr. Hodge has, except having a degree in whatever, has any business in the tourist industry.
You do realize we already voted on Mr. Hodge.
I understand that.
Okay.
So I'm just going on the record as saying, I think this board has missed an opportunity to actually be informed of what is required. And I thought when we left our last meeting, staff was gonna get together and research and find out exactly what's needed. So I've read the ordinances. I've read them from their inception, all the way to the 2014 change, and I understand what's in them. And the way I read them, I think y'all just made a mistake. Not me, in the way you voted, but I'm just stating that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Harvey?
I'm good, sir, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Conover, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what Commissioner Rawls says, what the ordinance says, that the council is supposed to have three owner-operators of motel, hotel, or tourist accommodations, and three members involved in the tourism industry who are not owner-operators of motel, hotel, or tourist accommodations. And I understand that Mr. Hodge has served on the TDC, and he's a member of the chamber. But I didn't understand how his business, as in a sign business, makes him involved in the tourism industry. And Dana explained to me that when he's been on the, as a member of the chamber, that sometimes the chamber talks about tourism, and that's how he's qualified for that. But his business isn't really involved in the tourism industry like mine is.
Chairman, I don't think it's, I don't think it says in there that his business has to be involved in the, it says he has to be.
You, you.
This is getting right on the edge of ridiculous. I mean, ridiculous. He's been involved in every festival. He was one of the charter members of the Blue Crab Festival, way back when they, when they cranked the thing up. He's been involved in tourist things all along. Doesn't say his business has to be.
Okay.
Doesn't say that in there.
Okay.
Now, I know we're reaching and we're grabbing, but why do you want to fight for this? Mr. Hodge is on there. So I'm, I'll vote for you to get on the next one, and I think there's one open if you fit. So why would you start fighting TDC and walk in the door just wanting to fight with TDC?
Well, on the other point of was it advertised or not, it's not. And I went to the county commission website. There's a place for citizens to volunteer for all the different boards. It's a drop-down menu, and you submit your online application. And when I had looked on the committee book to see that there were two vacancies, one definitely in the tourism spot with, you know, for Teresa Miller, and the other one for John Hodge, I thought there'd be an opportunity. So that's why I submitted my application. But in the past, sometimes the newspaper does put lists of committees where there are vacancies and asking for people. You know, sometimes it's on the city committees, sometimes it's on the county committees. The TDC one has been kind of this, you know, black hole, because the agendas aren't published, the minutes aren't published. I checked, you know, the, unless I missed them. The county website doesn't show them, and the chamber website, you know, is missing for the past year. So it's kind of this black hole, and it's something that, as I've stated, I care deeply, deeply about. So I didn't get on it this time. When, the next time, when there's a non-accommodations vacancy, I'll apply again. But I just want it to be more open and honest, and clean up the definitions, whatever you need to do, advertise for more openings. Because it's like this little, you know, you know, closed process when people don't even know about it. So that's kind of my point.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Conover.
Okay.
Dana, you want to address that? Or make some comments?
I just, I just want to address one comment. I did speak with Ms. Conover about John Hodge. And I mentioned the chamber spearheaded the first-ever effort for a tourism plan. But it was a county-wide plan, inclusive of everybody in the county, and has been ever since, when we do strategic plans for tourism. The last one was held here and directed by county, not just the chamber. So I just want to be real clear that chamber membership has no meaning on Mr. Hodge's ability to serve. It's helping write tourism plans and update them, and being the forefather of not only the Blue Crab Festival, but some of the art, Greater Arts Council boards and service in those areas, wayfinding signage for our visitors, et cetera. I just wanted to clarify, though, about tourism planning and the county-wide effort, not limited to a roomful of just chamber members.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Okay, we'll move down to comments. County administrator?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Joe DiNovo, county attorney?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. County commissioners, start with Commissioner Rawls.
Just want to say I had a really good time the other day. Even though it was a little bit rainy, the Florida Home Fall Festival. And a little shout-out to St. James United Methodist for hosting a very successful auction. Had a great turnout for that. So that's really about it. And I did have a lot of fun being bookended by Mr. DiNovo and Judge Buttright at a facetiously, I say, very exciting canvassing board class. I learned a lot about handwriting. And out of probably nine, I think I got eight of them wrong. So it'll be an interesting year this year, trying to compare people's signatures and determine whether or not they actually signed it.
Okay. Thank you for going through that training.
It was my pleasure.
Because I didn't want to do it.
You can do it.
I didn't qualify. Yeah, I guess not. Commissioner Goddard?
I did go through that, and it was interesting. I had the opportunity to be up in DC this past week, and actually was not excited about it. I mean, there's, there's two parts to go up there, but I knew it was gonna be meeting, meeting, meeting. Would it be successful? There's a lot of things I could be doing here. We had a varden problem. So, but anyway, I went. And it was great. It was good. I'm thinking that we, I was wasting time up there. And then it came back to me that how proud they were to see Florida being represented, Putnam County being represented, that there was, you know, three of us up there representing Putnam County. And it came back so good. And we had the opportunity to, you know, meet with these people and voice our opinions. But I think what I saw the most, we had Florida, Georgia, and Alabama, and we're all together. The commissioners had their opportunity to discuss certain problems in each one of their counties. And I say it all the time, if you, you got to get out and see Putnam County. We have a great county. Listening to these other people and the problems that they have, and the things that they're dealing with. dealing with, I'm gonna tell you, not to down them, but they sure make our county shine. We're doing a lot of things in the right ways, you know, we're, we're, we're moving ahead, not that they're not, but they, it's easy to look in your own family and say, we've got problems. Let me tell you, you look outside that box, we're just fine, we're fine. We are, got a great county, great people, and we're very blessed to live here.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Florida Home Festival was good, we started cooking at one o'clock in the morning, and just getting off the plane in DC, from DC, a few hours lag time, started cooking, but that's normal for me, correct? So I'm good. But it was really good, it was well-attended, and look forward to that this coming Friday. Commissioner Goddard and I, and if y'all wanna come out, will be cooking ribs for QI Robert's School. Don't know what the, can't remember who it's for, but it's one of the kids' groups there. We're cooking a hundred and thirty-five slabs of ribs. But let me do say one thing about Washington DC. You know, I wear two hats, I wear one as a Commissioner and one as a Rural Issues Chairman for the Florida Association of Counties. And we sit there in a room, and, I mean, County Administrator Suggs was there with our lobbyist, our federal lobbyist, and we're talking to agency heads or their representatives. And like I said to the people in Barden today, when you're able to directly do that and then call and email the next day, the person you just spoke to about problems, and how, okay, if you need financing, we have this kind of financing, those are nuggets that, that we would not get if we weren't up there doing that. So the trip was very powerful, very long, did a lot of walking, did a lot of Ubering, did, you know, you can't get through DC without Ubering or Lyft, I'll tell you that, or cab, it just doesn't work. But good things were done, I was able to fly up in the plane with Congressman Yoho and Congressman Rutherford, and sat right beside them and had opportunity, you know, you're pretty much bound for an hour and a half, you gotta talk about something, so talk about your county, and flew back with another, with a Senator, actually, from another state, but, you know, you're able to, to talk, and be able to bring Putnam County forward, and that's what we all do, and, and we do that very well. So I do wanna thank Commissioner Goddard and County Minister Suggs for going on the trip and, and presenting our, our, our needs to the people in the federal government. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also was able to attend the barbecue judging with Commissioner Rawls out in Florida Home, and we got through it with, with, I didn't even have any fights. It was a good thing.
Did you agree on?
Yeah, I concurred, you bet you did. The barbecue was all good. That's what we concurred on.
You did notice mine was not involved in the trip?
Yeah, I did. Commissioner Harvey took his entry out, because he figured as much as his chicken I've ate that he would, that I would know exactly who that was, so. So anyhow, I would like to give kudos to staff, my, my, my calls, that they, that people have not been getting their phone call returned have drastically reduced, and I appreciate that effort, guys, I truly do. Keep it up, I'll be your cheerleader right on, but keep it up. And Mike, I, I think that a lot of those calls were coming from public works in the past, because you have such a heavy load, and I think the new method that you have in place that kind of assigns those calls to somebody and gets them returned, is a big step in the right direction, so kudos to you in this, this presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Administrator Suggs wants to make a comment. He journeyed to Washington DC with the other Commissioners, so he's got a comment.
Yes, sir, I did know if they were gonna bring it up today, and I didn't wanna steal their thunder, but, but it was a great opportunity to, to see our Commissioners work as hard as they did on behalf of Putnam County with the leaders up in Washington DC. I think we were well-represented, and kudos to both Commissioner Goddard and Commissioner Harvey for that. You know, we, you know, it does make a difference when you're there, it really does. We were in a workshop all day on Wednesday, I guess Wednesday afternoon, I had a three-member panel on the Board, and one of them was the Assistant Secretary of the Army Corps of Engineers, and we're sitting, I guess, on Row Two or Three, and when the meeting was over, he pointed his finger at me and had me come up, and he's one of the folks that Matt and I and some other members I met with on more than one occasion, about our projects that we got, that we're pushing for Federal Point in Dunn's Creek, and he just wanted to let me know that they're still working as hard as they can for us, and, and being there, that was an opportunity for us to share some more information, so it was a really, really good opportunity to do that. And, you know, and because of that, I'd be remiss this morning if I didn't thank the, the staff here, as everybody else does. With that ability to go up there and know that when questions or issues or concerns arise and I'm not here, we've got outstanding staff that steps right in to address those concerns, understanding it was a couple while was out, so kudos to the staff for doing that. That's why we hire those that we hire and put them into positions that are in, so they can be successful and continue to fight the fight and do the things that need to be done while we're all not here. And so I'm glad to hear a couple Commissioners said you had reasons to contact them while I was gone, and you got what you needed, so thank you so much, and thank my staff for allowing me the opportunity to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Administrator Suggs. Mike, I'll go ahead and give you Department kudos also. I haven't had a lot of contact with Dalton yet, but I hope to introduce myself with him, you know, since you took Todd away from me, so, or my area supervisor, but two things that I had requested evidently got done, 'cause one of the people who live down Buffalo Bluff Road, I go to church with, and he's very grateful, thankful of fixing the transition from the paved road to the dirt road in Woodbury Trail, and another person that I know pretty well, Joe Pickens, lives down Buffalo Buff and Woodbury Trail, too, and he thanked me for getting the side of the mode, the road mode, so I appreciate that. We have a two o'clock transportation meeting, and Laura, we, the census meeting tonight is at six o'clock in this facility, and on a sadder note, Ms. Rhonda Masters Drackett, who attends our meeting and is a candidate for County Commissioner for District Three, her husband passed away unexpectedly yesterday, so if you keep her in, in, in your prayers, I'd appreciate that. And I do have a card, Commissioners, if you could sign that, and we'll mail that off to her this afternoon. So any further business to come before this Board, we stand adjourned.